All right, we will call the meeting to order. We will first start with roll call introductions. I'm Christy Hewling, Chair from Jeffersonville, and first we just want to welcome two new board members at the table, so Jenna O'Farrell and Kim Gleason. But if we could just go around and say name and just where you're from for a quick roll call.
I'm John O'Keefe, I'm from Manchester, Vermont.
Kim Gleason, I'm from Essex, Vermont.
Bill Mathis, Scotian.
Dan French, Secretary of Ed from Manchester.
John Carroll Norich.
Jenna O'Farrell, St. Johnsbury.
Callie Imbeck, student member, St. Johnsbury.
Okay, nice. Just looking at our agenda, are there any amendments needed to be made to the agenda? Seeing none, we are going to start with John's favorite thing to do, which is warm and fuzzy icebreaker activities.
I thought I missed this.
No, we waited for you.
I may have to go to the men's room.
Yeah, we didn't want to have you miss out. So, just as an icebreaker, we're actually going to do something that involves an iceberg for an activity. So, it'll be fun.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, one of the things that we always talk about on the State Board is we wear many hats. In the state of Vermont, we all have these different identities that kind of play into some of the decisions that we make, and we have different backgrounds that help, you know, influence us and brings different perspectives to the table. And so, this is kind of a way to discover maybe what are some of the obvious ones and maybe some of the least obvious things that you are bringing to the table when it comes to identity. And so, if you could just take these passing down. So, and some of the least obvious is the cultural iceberg is what people can see and maybe what's at the surface, and the things that we don't see that really to know more about you would help us just figure out perspectives a little bit better. On the next couple of pages, I put some ideas that you might want to include. So, things at the top is age and gender, appearance, clothing, language, festival dress, skin color, race, gender, age. And on the back one, sometimes you see physical ability, ethnicity, wealth, culture, religion. Some of these things are somewhat on the surface, and then there are things that are much more below. They could be things as family traditions, backgrounds, places you've lived that's shaped you, other things, norms, beliefs, things about emotional process, leadership styles, attitudes. On the back one, it talks about political values, languages, education, life experiences. And all of these really make who we are. So, I do this activity with my students too, and it's funny, the teachers all do this and we learn more, even though if we've been working with somebody for several years, we're like, oh, we had no idea about some of these things. So, if we could just take a couple of minutes to think about what you would want to put on the top and underneath. I'll just give you some examples, because I'll put myself out there, because I'm asking you to do this a little bit, is at the very top, if I was to talk about my iceberg, obviously female, I am a native English speaker, so you can see that. I am married, I always put, you know, some clues that we have or visual that I have a ring finger on. So, those are things sort of at the surface. And things that you might not know, just below, I had a major speech impediment when I was a little kid and had a really hard time and was a special ed student. So, that's when we talk about special ed, I can really internalize what that felt like to be pulled out of the room all the time. Underneath the waterline, if you're thinking about who I am, I am a mom, that's not always visible, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, so toddler. Other things that have been important to me, things like in family, being there at times when people pass. I've been honored to bring two people across to sort of the end-of-life care, and that's really shaped who I am and how I think about things in the world. When it comes to school, I was talking to Callahan, I didn't take the traditional route through college, took a little bit of a windy path in finding my own way, and started off at a very small school in Pennsylvania and ended at UVM, and took a gap year of my own in Seattle, so excited to hear about your gap year. So, those are just some, just little examples that you can think about. I just wanted to give you a couple of minutes to think about what's below and beneath your waterline. I'm not going to make you sit here in front of the camera, but we're going to get up and move around and just be able to reach out and to talk. And this is just a way to maybe break some icebergs, right, to get to know each other. Because you are really, you are the warm and fuzzy, but you don't like doing these activities, but you always do the best at it. So, as we're going around, if you could just take the time, we're going to take 10 minutes just to make sure we talk to everybody that's around the table and talk about something that's above the waterline and below, and just so we can mix, talk, and get to know each other, we're going to be sitting around the table, all of us here, for at least the next two years together. That's when the next term shift happens, which is really interesting that in the last couple of years, we've had, because Oliver was the off year, was that one year, but there's not another new appointees for two more years. And so, unfortunately, we have a couple board members that weren't able to make it today, but we'll...
You've probably heard about this exercise.
You know what, Peter did call me last night and ask me about it. But he's on a tropical island, so he said there's no place for icebergs there. So, he's on a tropical island. So, at this point, let's just stand up and just take some time, mix, and try to think about, you know, we wear all these different identities and different hats that shape our policy, and what are some ones that you're comfortable sharing with the people around the table that might just give you a little insight into who you're sitting with and sharing these conversations with? Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. All right, so, thank you for just taking the opportunity to just take them to do a little bit of an icebreaker. Hopefully, just having that visual, you know, sometimes you keep things on the surface, and how do you try to go a little bit deeper and get to know the people sitting around the table? And John, is that okay?
Yeah, it was great.
Okay. Always mindful of that. So, next, we have the consent agenda, and is there a motion we'd like to make?
Moved.
So, moved by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Callahan. Any comments, questions, or are people ready for a vote? On the consent agenda, we have the minutes from last meeting, we have the appointment of David Young to be a representative for the State Council Interstate Compact of Educational Opportunities for Military Children, and we have two green sheets for, one is for the Forest Ward Memorial School in Beddington, and the other green sheet is for the Parent-Child Center Teen Parent Education Program in Rutland. And are people ready to vote, or any comments or questions?
May I ask, may I ask, as a secretary, is this clear sailing for you as far as you're concerned? I'm speaking now about the Connect River Academy.
We had actually talked with them, I believe they might have had some interaction at the board on this as well, but I had met with them a couple of times early on in my appointment, so I knew this was coming. They're operating in the valley, and they were shifting operations to New Hampshire side of...
Thank you.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we've adopted the consent agenda. Are there any board announcements? Bill?
I just mentioned that I went to ARA, American Ed Research Association, intimate gathering of 13,000 of your favorite friends.
Educational researchers.
Yeah, very lovely crowd. And Amy Stuart Wells is the president this year, and her presidential address really dealt with equality and test-based kinds of evaluations and the inadequacies of those things and the way that we've been pursuing those things. And it was the strongest consensus I've seen yet in terms of the researchers, in terms of that kind of approach. And I think that we're shifting out of the Nickelby era even more so, and I'm hopeful that we can see a more balanced approach in the future, but I was glad to see that this is more than just small pockets.
Just in a similar vein, I attended the Council of Chief State School Officers Annual Legislative Conference in DC. As part of that, I attended an orientation for new chiefs, of which there are about 20 some odd, so it's the largest class of new chiefs they've had, so just you could think about that from a national perspective, that there's been a large turnover in chief school officers across the country. Yeah, it's really interesting.
Is there any explanation for that?
You know, some of the folks seem to think, well, it's largely attached, I think, to the political turnover. I don't have a clear figure in mind, but several of us are appointed and several are elected.
Yes.
So, there's, I think, the ones that are appointed, anytime there's an election change and the governors, there tends to be a change in the chiefs. But I was telling Bill, the observation from the leadership of the association was that there's an increased number of us that actually come from an education background, which they sort of described as being a result of sort of the post-NO Child Left Behind Act era. So, there's more educators aspiring to these positions, which is interesting.
All right, Callahan's student report.
Yeah, so, I did my report, this one, I wanted to go back to the panel we had from South Burlington, the students on implicit racism in schools, and Vermont's approach to kind of address that and have training. And so, I just wanted to see more, like, what is implicit bias outside of just schools? So, I researched kind of how it, like, how common, just see how common it really is. And I found that it's a lot in just relationships. So, within, like, based on a group of, if, like, you had three friends, 68% of whites are to be friends with just of the same race from age 18 to 34, compared with 37% Hispanics with Hispanics and 36% people with blacks with blacks. So, I thought it's evident just in friend groups, and it's not on purpose, like, I don't think anyone does that to be mean or vicious, it's just kind of what we tend to lean towards. And according to a poll from CNN, a majority of whites, 69%, say they live around people of the same race, and blacks are at 59% and Hispanics at 51%. So, we tend to just kind of group with people of our same race, not in a hurtful way, but just on accident almost. And about 12% of new marriages in the US are between different races, so a very low percent of just difference in a marriage. And I also found that there's a lot of problems with implicit bias, like, everywhere, so, like, a doctor even can have it on accident when prescribing medication, they're more common to give it to someone who is white because they feel like they won't abuse it compared to someone who's black. And, like, I found out that Starbucks requires implicit racism training with their employees, which I think is amazing. So, I actually reached out to the South Burlington kids to almost work with them to write, I guess, maybe like a policy brief to kind of give, not just to, like, the governor, but give to businesses and schools, just to really explain that this is an issue and it's a negative thing, but it's a positive thing to fix, and it really just takes, like, there's online programs where you can take tests just to see what your bias, and then, like, I was like, not to be bad, like, I was scared to take it. I was like, wait, like, I don't want to find this harsh truth that I do this, even though it's on, I don't do it to be mean, but, so I think it's amazing that we're approaching this in school, but just as young people, we should be approaching it to businesses. And I think it's amazing that Starbucks does that, like, it should be just outside of school. So, I think I'm trying to work with them to create just a paper, respectful paper, just encouraging this and giving the truth about it in a respectful manner, just to show that it is a problem, and it'd be a great thing to work on to fix because no one wants this. Like, it's not a positive thing, and I think if students were just more aware of it and adults, that it could be avoided much more easily.
For those that weren't here, for the South Burlington students that came in January, and their testimony was very powerful.
Yeah.
So, it's definitely worth going back and watching the video, and implicit bias that they've had throughout their careers. And it's interesting because there was a mix of students that had gone to public and private, and they all ended up at South Burlington High School from very different backgrounds, from some smaller schools, some from the Waldorf schools, and all feeding in, and their experience, that is pretty jaw-dropping, and I'm lucky enough that I work in the same office as their advisors, so I hear their stories almost every day.
Yeah.
And they really are working for implicit bias, and it is interesting that you bring up that Starbucks requires it for its employees.
Yeah.
The state of Vermont does not require it for its teachers and educators, and that is something that hopefully we can talk about as a board, because implicit bias really, especially for educators now with Act 77, teachers are giving career advice. And so, is there implicit bias based on race, gender, social economics? So, if you're giving career advice or college advice to somebody, and do you give different advice, not even, like you said, that you even consciously know?
Yeah.
If a girl comes and talks to you about medicine, do you automatically go to nursing? But do you automatically go to being a doctor with a male? Like, so that's checking your own bias. And if a student comes from low social economic status, are you pushing them towards community school while you're pushing other students to four-year degree? I mean, so, having, recognizing your own bias is really powerful, and making sure that you are then approaching students in a way that you're not transmitting your own bias. So, no, thank you. So, any comments or questions for Callahan?
Did you take a particular test? It was a, remember there being Harvard test?
Yeah, I know Harvard does it, and there's big pro, it's Kerwin, they're just a big company that they're based on implicit bias, and they work with a lot of universities. So, they offer just multiple choice, like, if you were in a situation, how would you approach it, kind of, what race do you associate with this job, like, just questions like that. I didn't end up finishing because it's really long, but the question, just within answering them, I was like, wait, like, I do associate this gender, this race with this job or stuff like that. So, they're really long tests, but I think they're definitely worth just looking at to kind of see the reality of it, because I think this is something that we're like, oh, I don't do that, but, yeah, everyone does it in some sense, so, yeah.
Is there one that maybe if we shared the link, we would be able to do it ourselves?
Yeah.
Do you want to share that for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Callie.
All right, thank you. So, for the chair's report, I do want to just make you aware that there were a couple documents put in the packet that were correspondence that we received. So, the very back, there's one from Vermont Higher Education Council and another one from the Association of Independent Schools in New England. And this is something we, I know that the secretary is looking more into about maybe what approach we're going to take, but want you to be aware of the different letters, that correspondence that came through. So, those are the two in the packet, so you could review them and have those, and those would be coming forward possibly at a next meeting, at a future meeting. Also, I, on Wednesday, the 11th, I was able to reach out to the Legislative Committee and the House, and they wanted to follow up with the letter we wrote last June about small schools grants. So, it was following up from that letter, and...
Did they lose the letter?
No, they didn't lose, it came back, actually I had to go find it for them again, they knew, like, you know you sent us this letter, could you resend it? So, we got them the letter and talked about it, and really with the small schools grants, and I hope I captured the conversation, there was no one reason why we put that together. So, there were competing reasons why people didn't like what the task we were asked to do. So, I communicated that some were fundamentally didn't like the idea of ranking schools and rewarding them out, and the idea of how does poverty play into what these test scores are, and then some just the inaccuracy of the data and how the data was put together and how, what sources we're relying on. So, there was some discontent, and we just wanted to make sure the legislature reviewed our work and told us, yes, this is the direction we want. And they actually didn't want us to review it, they wanted us to review it ourselves. So, it was kind of an interesting twist, that they really didn't have any critique of the small school grants. So, I asked them just for a little bit more direction about, well, what kind of critique would you like? They're like, well, what would be the best pathway forward? And I think they're kind of feeling stuck, they really want to see the waiting study that's coming out, and that might be more appropriate to have a conversation in the waiting study. So, they didn't have any clear direction from the House Committee on what they wanted to do, but they were reviewing our letter. Bill?
Yes, I think the waiting study is the place this belongs because it is a wait. And I would like to know how well the waiting study is going and when we're going to see the pieces. And one of the things that bothered me about the small schools grant was that for all the work that we put into it, when we subtract the small schools grant out, it becomes slightly more disequalizing. And this is something that needs to be looked at very closely. And do we have an update on the waiting study?
The waiting studies due out November, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Are you on schedule, or?
Yes, as far as I know, yeah.
The one thing they did ask about was if they delayed a year, and they were joking that they're now becoming the Committee of Delay. If they did delay for the small school grants for one year, I did point out that that, if they were going to do a delay, that two years would probably make more sense, because if they're already trying to delay what's going into the budget this year, and they're not going to do any work until next January, the budget starts in October, so they would actually need to do a two-year delay. And so, just talking through some of that, but it was really unclear about where they were, what direction that they were going to take.
There's a philosophical disagreement within the directions that they were going. They were using this as an incentive for Act 46, while at the same time, it was addressing a question of small schools.
Right, I think that's where they're stuck in that conversation, yeah.
Yeah, that was a very good conversation that we all had, and it seemed to me that the significant direction that came from the General Assembly and that we honored was that they appeared to be wanting us to reward achievement on the measures of excellence, efficiency, and equity, and implicitly therefore to punish lack of achievement. And that's a very, very interesting and significant policy choice. You know, in many ways, we put the resources where the performance is the weakest. This is Bill's point about by rewarding success, are you not at risk of accelerating disadvantage?
Punishing the poor.
On the flip side, of course, much of the, if you incentivize success, high performance in terms of equity, effectiveness, and efficiency, then aren't you likely to get that? But what about those, so, and the legislature's directive to us had the effect of essentially incentivizing a success by rewarding it and punishing lack of success by denying small school grants. That's a, I think that's a very, very significant and kind of difficult discussion, just, that's just an observation.
Yeah, they're grappling with that now, the choice that they made, and looking at the repercussions. And we had the advantage of, we talked about on the board, we didn't have schools' names attached to it, now it has schools' names attached to it, so it's a different conversation, and that's where they're struggling, like, do we want to follow through with this now?
Yeah, I guess I would say that if we had mechanisms to proactively address the weak performers, then I'd feel more comfortable with what we have, what we, but just starving them of resources is not a mechanism for improvement, it's just punishment.
So, the legislature, again, is wrestling with that, and I don't think there's quite an answer for that, and I think they would prefer we come up with an answer for them. So, create the problem, and we'll come up with a solution for them. So, that's something that we may want to talk about when we talk about the legislative update, and if we do have a solution, and for me, I would, I really wouldn't want to come up with a solution, they wanted me to come up with a solution on the spot in the meeting, and I was like, well, you know, to make good policy, you need to think about things, and you can't just make it from the fly. So, if this is something they would like us to look at, I'd hope it'd be a longer term coming back next session, and so if they were to delay and then ask us to review, because it's interesting, we did our work on the time and said, review it, and now they want us to review our own work.
I have, I mean, I don't mind the legislature delegating some of the duties to us that they've given, like, small school, I mean, I was showing somebody this thing on YouTube the other day, it was a Saturday Night Live skit where it was called the yardipult, and if you didn't want something in your yard, you put it in the yardipult, shoot it into your neighbor's yard, so it was like tires and air conditioners and all this sort of stuff, and they would pull on this thing, and it was an infomercial, but I do feel like sometimes it is the yardipult, that, you know, we're getting this stuff sent into our yard, and we're dealing with it, and we're coming up with these answers and these solutions, but I guess, I guess my, what makes me a little reluctant going forward is we, Act 46 or the small schools grant, we come up with these solutions, and then nobody likes the answers that we've come up with, and then we second-guess them. And I guess, it's okay to second-guess things, but I guess if one group isn't willing to make a decision, they defer to another, I guess they can't really have buyer's remorse when the second group comes up with an answer that might not be politically palatable, and I think that's why they get, I think that's why these things get sent to us, because it's hard to make, it is hard to get 200 people, it's much easier to get nine people heading in the same direction than 200.
And I suggested to you that if there's something they want us to look at, is to give us time, and we can thoughtfully present it to them in January. What's been happening is they've been giving us dates certain that these things need to happen, there needs to be, within these parameters, follow these guidelines, create something. And if they would want something on the reverse, if they would like us to come up with the idea before the rulemaking, that needs to be a little bit different process.
I agree.
It's technically complex, too, and require a certain amount of numbers crunching, and we don't have the capacity for that, and if they want to give us the capacity, it would make things a whole lot easier.
All right, so that's moving on, so we have public to be heard, is there anybody here coming forward? Sure.
All together.
Oh, all together. Great.
Nothing going on in the legislature today, huh?
This morning.
Life's about choices.
Yes.
Cole, you sit in the middle, you're the one talking.
Musical chairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nicole Mace, the Executive Director of Vermont School Boards Association, and I'm joined by...
Jeff Francis with the Superintendent's Association.
Jay Nichols, Principals Association.
So, first, we wanted to introduce ourselves to the two new members of the State Board of Education and welcome you to this role. It's very exciting to have new faces, know Kim very well, but look forward to getting to know you, Jenna. We wanted to speak to you this morning because we are, we see that you have Act 173 draft rules on your agenda later this afternoon. The three of us are unable to be here this afternoon due to other commitments, and just wanted to be sure that the State Board is aware of the action taken on April 1st by the Act 173 Advisory Group, which unanimously, with the exception of Secretary French who abstained from the vote, moved to recommend delaying implementation of two key pieces of Act 173, movement to census-based block grant, the date, moving that date from FY21 to FY22, and pushing back the rule deadline from November 30, 2019 to November 30, 2020. I'm not sure what the plan is for the rules today, but there was a possible vote on your agenda. There are substantial differences of opinion, I think, at this point with respect to the content of the draft rules, and so we want to encourage, and the Senate Education Committee this afternoon is taking testimony from VCSA about their concerns, which is why they're unable to be here. And so, we just wanted to flag for you, before you make a decision about whether to move those rules forward, that there are substantial concerns about the current draft. VCSA is in a better position to speak to some of the details around that, but if you had questions, we could do our best, fill in the gaps. I'm not sure if you've received anything in writing from them or what materials you've looked at before that conversation today, but...
Bill?
The first level of specificity, please, in terms of your concerns, are the concerns of the special ed coordinators?
I think the biggest area of concern is the degree to which the rules leave open the question of the level of documentation that's going to be required on the part of school districts in order to comply with IDEA. Act 173 was really presented... Act 173 was really presented as an opportunity to eliminate a lot of the onerous documentation requirements and provide more flexibility for educators. And current discussions with the agency have raised, I think, concerns on the part of special ed administrators that the current thinking is that the paperwork requirements will not be reduced at the level that was expected. And that is my understanding in practice in other states. And so I think there needs to be some more dialogue between the groups about what federal law does require. Clearly, we have to, Act 173 does not eliminate our obligation to follow IDEA. The question is, to what degree does complying with IDEA require the types of documentation that is currently being required or may be required? The rules are very open-ended and don't, I think, give folks on our side of the table the level of assurance we'll be looking for, that there will be this flexibility moving forward.
Okay, does that decode as the difference of opinion between this agency, special ed people, and the local district people in terms of the level of burden?
I don't think we can speak for the agency.
Yeah.
In terms of the difference of opinion. What I will say is that the advisory group that Nicole referred to has spent a lot of time in meetings talking about this very issue. And the vote that was taken was indicative of the fact that, I think, with the rules particularly in mind, the advisory group didn't feel comfortable moving forward on the pace that was indicated in the law.
Right.
And both in the House and Senate Education Committees, there's been a fair amount of due diligence that seemingly has brought them to a place where they're going to pass legislation that will provide that delay. So the question is, and I'm not a lawyer or an expert on the relative pacing, but the question is, does it make sense to initiate the rulemaking process at the State Board level today when it seems like a likely outcome is that the General Assembly is going to accept the testimony they've heard asking for the delay until November 2020 in terms of the rules? And what that means in terms of the process overall? The, your question about the, does it signal disagreement? I think that we have been working well with the Agency of Education. So this is not in any way, shape, or manner intended as criticism to the agency. It's just, and it's interesting that the Board itself was talking about the decisions that you've been faced with as a State Board. And now you're at a place where you need to make a decision, I think, on reconciling what the advisory group is doing and recommending, what the legislature is contemplating, and what you may hear from the agency in terms of their level of preparation and readiness. So there needs to be a reconciliation of those views in order to make the law work well.
So, we do have this coming up on our agenda. And just so you know, the 173 typically, no matter what with rulemaking, it's brought up for one month and wouldn't even be voted to next month. But I did add the vote in case we also wanted to take a vote on, to take what the advisory committee had put forward. So there's a spot on the meeting that, when having that discussion, someone could make the motion to also mirror the same decision that was made by the advisory group.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
And I would just, I would reiterate, maybe it's reflective of my tendency to talk too much.
Never, Jeff.
I mean, it always, it always comes down to that, right? What I want to just indicate is that we, we've got good working relationships with the agency, like we try to have with the State Board and the General Assembly. So this is not, I don't think it's reflective of a conflict. I think it's indicative of all of us working together to want to get this law implemented. We often say that Act 173, I think, is one of the most significant pieces of public policy in recent memory. And there's a real opportunity here in terms of service to kids, cost benefit, and working together. And that's the sphere in which we offer these comments.
And again, it was an aggressive timeline put into law.
But I think that's, to me, that's the biggest thing. Thinking about principals and teachers on the ground, we need to make sure that we have plenty of professional learning opportunities for folks so that when we get ready to implement 173, we change the instructional practices the way that we say we're going to. Because if we don't, we're going to end up in a situation where there's going to be winners and losers. We need to make sure that we reshape how we do our instructional practices in schools. And that's going to take time and training and support for that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else wanting to come forward for public to be heard? Now Nicole, was there somebody for your office that was also coming to talk about a conference that's coming up in May? No, maybe I got that wrong.
Was it VPA?
Was it? Did you want to give that quick plug?
No.
Okay. Was there an equity? I'm just trying.
There was a VPA equity thing.
Again, Jeff Francis, Superintendent's Association. I'm not sure what, if anything, the State Board would have to say about this, but I think that it's appropriate to mark the passing of Ned Kirsch, who was an exemplary educator, died tragically last week. The secretary has issued a statement which was welcome and totally appropriate. It's the type of, I think, event that really defies any sort of spoken explanation. But Ned was a leader in our association, a great technologist, I think, a true visionary with regard to public education. And he had an extraordinary passion for the children that the public education system serves. So I, maybe there'll be some comments on this later. I'm not sure I won't be here, but I just wanted to express publicly what a tremendous loss that is to the state. He is a hugely significant character, I think, in public education in Vermont. It's not always apparent the contributions that people are making when they're with us. But when we lose them, it becomes extraordinarily well-recognized what educational leaders and, and all of them do in terms of what we're trying to do for kids and communities in the state. So I just wanted to come back to the table and say that. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As a moment, could we, you're going to switch gears a little bit and go to item G. And I'm not sure if Emily, would you want to join us at the table? Just if people had clarifications from the memo that you had sent out? And, and we do have, I believe, Rickorn, right? Okay, from Compass School here, I can come up to the table too. But maybe we can start just with the memo itself. And this really came about because I got a call from Lola from important investigating in school. And I hadn't known anything about the situation. But that the Compass School had lost their, their status as a non- What?
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt, thank you. Status for failure to file their 990s for three years. And then following up and looking at, well, what should the State Board do? And if we have questions about financial capacity? And so before we even start talking about the case, could you just talk to us about what, and this is all new for us. This has never happened in front of the Board. So that's why it'd be great to start with what's in the law and what resources there are, and what steps we should be contemplating moving forward.
Yeah, so Emily Simmons, Agency of Education. The memo that Krista is referencing is really the statute itself. I just thought I would pull it out of the Green Book and out of the Vermont statutes annotated all in one place for you because it's largely new text that was passed, actually, as part of Act 173. And the implementation dates in Act 173 or the effective dates are just a little confusing. So I thought it would be nice to see in one place that this is the new law that became effective on passage. There is more law in the same section of Title 16 that will become effective in 2022. So we're sort of in a middle place in legislation that was passed last year in 2018. So that, I just thought, it's potentially confusing when you open your Green Book. I'm not sure if any of you did. There's LexisNexis, the company that publishes that book that we all use, has some italicized language that says, "Look above for what's effective now and look below for what's effective in three years." So I really didn't do any analysis for you. You just have the text of the law there. I'll highlight that the new changes don't really impact the proof that an entity must show to you to gain approved status. The changes really aren't in that section. It's sort of in a, in a look back where the new requirements are, including the one that you're referencing about failure to file tax documentation. So the agency, when we put together the report for you for whether you'll approve an independent school, won't necessarily look any different because of the way the law is structured. But you have this new inquiry authority on these financial factors. And they're called financial reporting events in the statute, which is different than reference to financial capacity in the approval section of the law. So just to highlight for you, it's a little funny, and it's, you know, your section of the statute. So you'll take some interpretations, and we'll follow your lead as needed as you work through it. And this is just the first time that it's come up for you.
John?
Yes, Emily, I have a question for you to help us clarify. The sort of triggering event here was the termination of the schools' tax-exempt status, 501(c)(3) status, brought about by the school's failure to make timely filings of their 990s. Would you say that the filing of a 990 represents a, is part of the school's tax reporting obligation to the federal government?
Not a tax lawyer, and this is a new area.
They're the best lawyer we have out there.
I think that's, it's up to the Board how you'll implement this new statute that you've been given. That's, it's why I wanted you to look at the text of the law. And also to understand that the words in the list of financial reporting events are what they are. There's also a process that I wanted you to remember that if you find those financial reporting events have been triggered, then you have a few questions to ask. Was notice, was the five-day notice timely? So is the school upholding its responsibility to notify for one of those events? Then you look at the process where there's an opportunity for a hearing. Even further down, there's an option for a site visit. And all of that comes before the State Board were to take any action to revoke or suspend approval status as an ultimate outcome.
We understand that this is the Board's decision to interpret. But I'm asking you, as an attorney, if you believe that the failure to file a 990 represents, matches the language of statute, which requires the timely filing of federal or state tax returns? Those are the words.
Your, as I understand it, your obligation as an entity to pay taxes is only relieved if you have an exemption, which is gained by the filing of a 990. So yes, it seems to trigger the language.
Seems to trigger?
Seems to trigger the language in the statute.
Okay.
I'll also point out, I think, I mean, you're going to hear directly from the Compass School, so it might be a question you want to ask. The list is preceded by, unless the failure is de minimis, and you have really no guidance in the statute or in your rules about what is de minimis. That might also become part of your conversation, depending on what the facts are in this case.
Krista?
Yeah, Bill?
There's, in looking at 166, the situation where you are allowed to have a visiting team look at this and that. Question is, is what can trigger that investigation? Can we, can anybody? It's not clear in the law.
So I don't believe that you've used that step since anyone who's currently on the Board, has been on the Board. So actually, Bill, what I would encourage you to do is, as part of your discussion today, if the Board would like to take further steps, to please discuss what you think your procedure would be. As the attorney for the agency, I'm not going to be able to tell you exactly what you should do where the statute doesn't tell you. And I think you're right. What I'm saying is I'm not prepared to walk you through your next steps. I think the understanding was you would have an initial conversation about the facts of this case today, and then determine if you want to go forward.
So I just want to make sure that we do have, so, and I guess this is a question for Dan. Will we have an attorney to help us walk through this process? And is that going to be through the agency? Or, or does that need to come from somewhere else?
Yeah, I mean, as long as, our sort of rule of thumb is as long as there's not a conflict of interest between the agency and the Board, that we would provide you legal support on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to understand the way that this is written and what you presented for us. And so on page three, it does talk about that and the school's failure to file a federal or state tax return when due. And then it goes down to some other things that could be triggers. And then it goes down to where it's B. If the Board reasonably believes that their approved independent school lacks financial capacity, it then has to have a hearing. So it really says, "The State Board shall notify the school in writing of reasons for this belief and permit the school reasonable opportunity to respond." So I guess that's not a technical hearing, that just has to be a letter.
That's where we are today.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we would have to put things in writing and send them a letter to follow the rules.
I think what I'm missing here, maybe where I'm accidentally confused thing is I don't know that the Board has made a determination that you reasonably believe that there's not financial capacity.
Right, that's where I think the conversation is today. And then that would initiate, if we do believe, we have to put it in writing and submit it to them. So I'm just trying to understand this process because this is new. And again, no one else in the Board, no one on the Board has done this. And this is legislation that came about through last year. So the State Board would have to put something in writing, send it to the school, allow them opportunity to respond. And then if the State Board, after having provided the school reasonable opportunity to respond, does not find the school as satisfactory responded, then you set up a team. And with the consent of the school, including a member of the Council of Independent Schools, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're walking down the correct path. So any questions about process that, before we even start talking about the case? Because it's making sure we understand where we're at. Okay, yeah, John?
I don't know if this is the timer for it, but I'm going back now to the September 15, 2015, school approval. Consent it in by the Board. And it has the usual admonition in the approval that says the approval is subject to the condition that the school will immediately, whatever that might have meant at the time, report to the Agency of Education and have any changes occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. So that, that also kind of, it could be that it's been brought to our attention. I think that's yet to be established, that the school failed to bring it to the Board's attention, information that was pertinent on a timely basis.
So what is the, what would the process be if the Board determined that that was the case?
So I just want to highlight, John was alluding to it, your current approval language uses five days. So that now we're kind of defining what immediately means to you, that in 2015, we had not started using that language yet. So it's, it's squishy. If the new statute had not existed, so I would like to pretend that we were under the old statute to answer this question because it complicates things.
Right.
So under the more general statute that you would have had this time last year, I think you would have followed roughly the same process. Your approval is contingent on dutifully and promptly immediately reporting. If the Board found a failure to comply with that condition, I think you would ask some questions of the entity, find out how serious the Board felt the violation was if you found one, and continue from there. You've had the ability in the statute to condition, suspend, or revoke approval status. That's not new. You just have some new triggers into that process.
And what about, so we're, and interesting as John brings up that- And what about, so we're, interesting as John brings up that approval that runs out June 30th of this year. So adds another layer of complexity. So we have an approval process that's currently going on for the school.
Yes.
So how does that affect any of these processes?
So the general education approval process has been sent to the person that the agency contracts with currently to do those evaluations. So it doesn't really change that process. We're still following the normal timeline for reviewing approval of the school. And as I highlighted earlier, the new statute doesn't have different language about what the board will look at when it's approving a school. So it's been an internal conversation at the agency about how to react. There's not been any action at the agency to change what we would present to you at your meeting when you review the approval renewal. That was a lot of AL words, but yeah.
All right, any more questions about process and the sort of the changes with 173? Or any of that question before we talk about the school itself?
Yeah. What is the role of the agency? When I look at 166, it talks about the state board's responsibility, but it does not talk about the secretaries. And Emily has just mentioned that preparing a report, there's some ambiguity here.
So we, the agency staff prepare the materials, as you know, each month when you review a request for approval. Some of those materials are currently prepared by an outside contractor that the agency uses, and then there's a lot of administrative work that goes into getting the packet together for you, but it's still ultimately your decision based on the evidence that we're able to, the legwork that we put into bringing you evidence to review.
Kim?
I was just curious about the timing. We would be reviewing this currently and separately, the approval process would be happening and determined by the end of June. Is it conceivable that either there's duplication of efforts happening or a conflict in the decision-making that timing-wise may not make a whole lot of sense?
Well, that's, I think, the interesting why I asked about the timing, and I'm not even sure at the agency if they're on track. I'm not sure if you can speak to this about the timeline, if on track to have things prepared for June 30th? If that's, and that may play into our decision what to do as a board, too.
This particular approval is on the normal schedule to be before you, either at your May or June meeting, off the top of my head, I can't remember which, I'm sorry. And remember that an approved independent school's approval continues if you do not act on it. It rolls forward.
Yes, but there's one question I have on that, is that I agree that it says it will continue if it's in process in a timely fashion, but then it says that if you're not compliant with the state board rules, then you cannot call down tuition money.
I don't have your rules in front of me. I'd want to look at where that text is, if you can. I have a paper copy in the back of the room.
Okay. Well, that's a significant question.
Yep, you seem to know where it is in the rules, Bill, so I'm wondering if you can give me a hint.
Let me look.
Where I catch you at the break also.
Somewhere in 2200.
2200, somewhere. All right. So at this point, maybe we can switch gears a little bit, and do you want to come to the table to answer for questions? And did you bring, do you want to state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm Rick Gordon, I'm the Director of Compass School, and this is Roxanne Blake, who's our current co-chair.
Okay. Thank you both for coming. So just wanted to go through, you sent some letters and sort of talking about what had happened, and sort of the board's inquiry is about financial capacity. And then the question came up, if the 990s haven't been filed, what about an audit? And there hasn't been any audits done during these years either. And so if you could talk to, sort of, about this situation, anything you'd want us to know just about what contributed to this and really sort of made, what have you done differently at the school to make sure this doesn't happen again? And so what remedies have you already put into effect? And thinking about your application moving forward? So I just wanted to give you time to speak to some of those issues.
Thanks. And first, let me welcome the new members here, thanks for your service, and apologize to everyone, I shouldn't be taking any of our time. I really regret this, you know, being on your plate and on our plate. And also just apologize, Roxanne has to leave at 11:00 because she has another meeting at the State House, so if she has to leave or if she has any questions, you can ask her first. But the, there's no question about financial capacity, the idea of not, you know, alerting the Agency of Education, we've never had a financial capacity problem. As I tried to relate in the letter, if you had a chance to read it, this was a completely circumstantial issue with personnel and procedures. And as unbelievable as it sounds now to me, in all my life, all my degrees, all my experience, I never knew the importance of a 990. I'm also treasurer for a nonprofit, but it's a religious nonprofit, so ironically enough, they don't file 990s. So like even though I'm responsible for a nonprofit's finances, that never came up to me. And I've talked to other people, some who've been on boards of nonprofits, and they said, some people don't know about it, but it's always been handled for 15 years. It was handled through a procedure that didn't cross my desk. And I know about a lot of things from my education, I've learned a lot by being director for almost 20 years about how various things work. This wasn't one of them. And now I know the importance of it, and we've put a lot of things in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. So we've never had a financial capacity problem. I have with me the, our bank statements for the last six months, if you want to see what's in our bank account. I mean, so that was never the issue. We weren't trying to avoid anything. As I explained as well, we had addressed this before the IRS or before the digger was alerted about this. The digger heard about this before we did. We had already filed the paperwork with an accountant, and he was in the process of getting the filings to the federal government. So we had filed all our 990 paperwork with the accountant who was sitting there. We heard from the digger through an email, whatever that was, a few weeks ago. We heard from the IRS a week after that in a letter. We've never heard from the IRS in the last three or four years. They never alerted us saying you're missing this.
Did you alert the agency? Because I definitely didn't get anything from the school letting us know that you didn't file the paperwork. So did you, I know you said you then remedied this with an accountant?
Yeah.
But did you alert the agency?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, as a board, we were not alerted to any of these concerns. So.
Do you have a copy of your notification to the agency?
It's an email to Pat Palace Gray. I mean, I could find it.
And it was from when?
It was like right after this digger article, like four or five days after that.
Okay, I thought you said just beforehand. Sorry, I thought you just said before the article even came out, you already had all the paperwork filled out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if you had it already filled out before the article came out, then, I'm just saying, went.
Why didn't I alert the agency? I didn't, I didn't know we were supposed to tell the agency about the 990 forms. I thought, I mean, that was, I thought that was between us and the IRS. I didn't know there was a reporting requirement to the agency about that.
So when did you know then, when did you become aware that that had not been filed? And you tried to remedy that with the accountant?
The 990s hadn't been filed? Well, there's two phases of 990s in my head. And again, I'm no expert on this, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a tax person. There's our end of it at the school. We got to put together, you know, a bunch of numbers and stuff, you know, that, from our accounting, which we do on QuickBooks, and it's really, it's all there again. I sent a couple of versions of it along here. So our business manager had to get all that together. They got it to our accountant in the late fall, and the accountant had it in his hands and said to us, "After tax season, I'll file this." You know, like, "I have a ton of taxes to do, this is not what I'm prioritizing." And so that's where we're sitting. So then when we, you know, when this all came up in the public, we called the tax guy and said, "Could you actually send those in?" And so we did them over that weekend, and then they're all there, and they're on our website again. You can look at our financial capacity, you know, 990s are all on our website now and are publicly available. And that was filed two weeks ago, I guess. And then in between, after this became public, then we immediately called the, I emailed the agency, Pat Palace Gray, and said, "Just so you know, this is being looked at by the digger, and sorry, it was a mistake due to all this personnel stuff."
John?
Tell me to the extent the school receives charitable contributions?
How much do we receive in charitable contributions? Grants separately from contributions are all total.
Charitable contributions.
We get somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 a year, most of which comes from two or three grants we get, ones related to health programming, health and wellness.
Are these private sector grants or government grants?
Private, so they're foundations.
Do you receive any charitable grants from individuals in the community? Anybody send $100 to help support the school's operations? That sort of thing. Do you send those?
Yeah. We have, yeah, like 100 donors or so a year. We get about $12,000 in annual giving. 10,000 to 12,000, something like that.
So this goes exactly to financial capacity. Any charitable contribution with, with an organization that represents itself as tax-exempt, when you're not tax-exempt anymore, you've just changed the ground rules on all of your contributors. Have you notified them all that for a period of time or currently you are not tax-exempt?
No, because our understanding is, we, and this is very clearly laid out in the IRS communications we've had, that they can reinstate retroactively in the very clear process. Apparently this is not, we're not the only nonprofits that have this problem.
Oh, yeah, there are others.
And so they say, you know, "Here's the form, here's the process, and send the stuff in," and we retroactively will reinstate your tax-exempt status, hopefully.
That has not happened yet, has it?
It's in, it's in the IRS hands.
Right. So you have not yet received the reinstatement? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So for the moment, people who have contributed money and taken write-offs on their personal taxes because they made a contribution to a not-for-profit, they're in a bit of a pickle because they've represented to the IRS only a few days ago that they gave money to a not-for-profit called the Compass School, perhaps at a time that the school was no longer a not-for-profit. So this goes to your financial capacity. Some of these grants are coming from not-for-profit entities who may rely upon passing their money to other not-for-profits, because that's part of their tax management. And individuals, like any of us here at the table, all of whom make little gifts to charitable organizations. And federal law encourages us to do that by giving us a tax break. So I think your failure to manage this properly puts in jeopardy the stream of charitable contributions that you received and is, if I were a donor, I'd be pretty annoyed that I had given money to an entity that had assured me they were tax-exempt, and it turns out they're not. So this is not just a paperwork oversight, this has bearing upon your ability to operate your school because you do rely upon charitable contributions, 12,000 in smaller individual ones, and apparently significant amounts from not-for-profit grants. So I hear you sort of dismissing this as a paperwork oversight, but in fact, your school has benefited from the status created by filing 990s, and then you failed for three years to do so. And so I think that that really does come under the general rubric of any changes that occur in enrollment, program, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. At least for me, you failed to comply with your notification requirement in the approval that was granted to you in 2015. How serious is that? That's for the board to describe, but I don't see that one can conclude otherwise than that you, that there was a significant change in your status occasioned by your oversight.
Yeah, it's a point. I mean, I totally understand your point. It's, I mean, again, we found out about this a couple of weeks ago. We totally understand it was a mistake, it's wrong, it's problematic. We did contact our biggest grant funding organization, which, and talked to them about it, and we talked to USDA holes our loan, and they assured us it's not a problem with our loan. So you're right. I mean, it's not good. I mean, it's not good to lose your exempt status. And, and we've rectified it, and we've put in place processes to prevent it from happening again. I can't change the fact it was a mistake. I really apologize. I feel terrible about it. I don't really want to throw a bunch of people under the bus. I should have known. I mean, I can't do much more than say, "It was wrong, I understand it now, and we didn't mean it to be."
Could you just bring, can you just clarify for us? It shows in the green sheet from 2015 that you had an audit in 2014?
And 15.
And can you talk about any audits since then? And who's had, who's been looking at those audits?
Yeah, so we had an audit in 2014 and 15, and not any audits, I understand it, again, not being expert on this, an A133 audit is what it's called. I understand it's like the highest level of audit. We paid $15,000 in 2015 for this audit. And two years in a row, the audits came back with whatever you call it to have no negative findings, all these positives. And so $15,000 represents three or four or five kids' tuitions at our school. Kids who are from low-income homes will have come to the school either with no tuition or maybe $3,000. So given those positive findings and our 15-year record of very successful budgeting, the board felt like paying $15,000 to an auditor versus having three or four or five kids have a chance to have an education where they can thrive was more important to put money towards the kids. We, so that's why we haven't had audits since then, and because the findings were really positive, and we haven't really changed any of our accounting systems. So that was the choice. Obviously, if money wasn't the issue, we'd be happy to have an audit every year. It's obviously a normal process you wish you could do, but, you know, we're making choices with very low finances and trying to serve a group of kids, and people don't know, over half our kids are on free reduced lunch, and 95% come with financial aid. So that was the choice. And again, might have been, looking back, it's a wrong choice, but that was the explanation of that.
Jenna?
As part of your renewal process, that's your application's in to the state? Part of the application for independent schools is submitting our current audit?
Yeah.
So do you?
No, it's not.
It's not anymore?
There's four different ways you can.
Okay.
And the last way, which again is.
So what have you done right now? Have you submitted the application for the June?
Yeah.
Okay. And you didn't submit a current audit at this point?
No, but the four, one of the ways is to submit a letter from the board attributing your accounting, internal accounting practices, along with two years budgets. And so that, so the budgets are sort of, which again, I forwarded to you the budgets I sent to the state.
It's a letter from the board. So as a board member, could you speak to that as a board? What was your discussion and what did you use as your evidence to, when you wrote that statement, saying that you thought the, that the school is in high financial capacity? What evidence did you use and what discussion did you have at the board level to back that statement up?
Looking at the bank statements, there's $200,000 surplus sitting in the savings account of the bank each year, year after year. There's been around that amount of a surplus for the last several years since I've looked at the paperwork. I just came onto the board in October, but I did look back at the bank statements from this prior year, and there are no red flags. Our financial statements that the treasurer of the board looks at has no red flags for any financial issues or shortcomings in any account. So it's with confidence that I can say that there are adequate funds. I can see what's going to, you know, scholarship and salary, and that's basically what we pay for, the mortgage, those are the primary expenses. So there's, there's money in the bank, even if there's a shortfall. You know, on a revenue, profit-loss kind of basis, there's still a cushion of several hundred thousand dollars in the bank, so.
Bill?
What you just said indicates that you're running a cash system, but yet on this sheet here, it says it's an accrual basis, but it isn't presented as an accrual budget, which would, and why that's relevant is it could cover up potential liabilities that are not seen, which would jeopardize the financial situation of the, if you had unnoted debt, debts or what have you. Is there anywhere in? Is there anywhere in the information that you provided a statement of debt?
The ten-nineties have a statement of liability.
Nine-nineties.
Or the nine-nineties, I'm sorry.
Okay. Of course, the problem is we hadn't seen them for three years.
And they hadn't been done.
But I did, I did see them. I looked at the last three years. I mean, they're all positive, so I guess that's why.
I'm just trying to figure out the timetables. If you saw them before you wrote the letter, but you didn't know about this until the story came out by Digger.
No, 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 I just saw them because they were, I signed them whenever that was, a week ago, to submit them to the IRS. I looked at them at that point.
But when you wrote the letter to the agency from the board, you hadn't looked at the nine-nineties. So...
When I wrote to the Agency of Education...
The application that you submitted with the letter from the board saying that you were meeting your financial obligations, the board had not seen the nine-nineties when they wrote that letter.
Yeah. But she had seen all the, you know, all the, every two months, the board treasure report and looking at those finances, and again, knowing, knowing the history of, and knowing the debts, I mean, we have, you know.
John, anything you may think? Thank you.
So, so without an audit, I guess, I'm a little concerned about that, that, you know, when you say, well, this is my checking account. If you look at my checking account, thirty of them, I look rich. And then on the first, I look very poor. So I guess that, so I guess I'd be weary of the, of how it was...
Well, a six-month worth of banks.
No, no, I understand that. But the audit really, you know, the audit, I'm not sure an audit really comes out with, like, the nine-ninety, that had you had an audit, that the nine-ninety would have gotten flagged. I'm not sure they look at whether you filed a nine-ninety in an audit.
It's immaterial.
They're looking at different things. Following up on John's comment, though, one of the other things that you benefit from, even though you weren't a not-for-profit, was sales tax exemptions too as well. So you've got all these other issues piled up, that, you know, when you're going out to the store and buying things, you're saying that you're tax exempt. I guess my question to you, though, is, so you did previously file nine-nineties, correct?
Yeah.
More than three years ago. How come, why did that, you know, we have, in my organization, we have something that we do every single year that comes up, and staff does it, and we execute these activities once a year. Like, you know, I work for municipalities, so we send out tax bills every year. How come this, suddenly it was being done, and then, or it was being done, and then suddenly...
Yeah, it's a great question. So ironically, it has to do with the audit partly. So we, we had these two audits because we got, we had a USDA loan, and we had to have these A-133 audits. We had one accountant do it one year, who she was kind of very difficult to work with. We switched to a very reputable accountant, you know, paid fifteen thousand dollars, which seemed a lot to me.
Yep.
Prior to that, we had a tax filing company doing our nine-nineties, and they would, surprisingly to us, I learned late, I just learned this recently, they would file an extension before even asking us. And then they'd kind of, as business managers, say, we filed an extension already, send us the materials when you get them ready. And then they would file it with the business manager. The business manager would bring it to the president of the board, the chair of the board, the chair of the board would sign it. That happened up till we did these A-133 audits. The first year of the A-133 audits, the woman filed the nine-ninety, you know, which I kind of thought was part of the audit process in retrospect. The next year, they did the A-133 and didn't file the nine-ninety. That was the first year it wasn't filed. At the same time, we switched business managers, got a new board chairs, new treasurer. We just had no institutional knowledge way of paying, of moving that forward, the information forward. So all that happened at once, and then there was this very unfortunate circumstance, which is, you know, not an excuse, but the, our biggest advisor on our accounting was a parent who's an accountant, and she wouldn't be on our board because she felt it was a conflict of interest. Her son committed suicide that same year. So she was the one who would be most on top of, like, everyone saying, you guys got to pay attention to this. And she just dropped off the radar for a couple of years. She's back involved now, but it was very circumstantial, having to do with personnel and these various pieces. And again, I, you know, I can't make any excuse, and I didn't realize how these were being done and the importance of them as director. Now I certainly do, and, you know, I'll certainly be on top of it.
So what's your current thought on, on an audit? Having done them in the past, fifteen thousand dollars is actually pretty standard for...
Yeah. I mean, we'd be happy, I mean, we're happy to have audits, I mean, in terms of our, again, I mean, what I'm trying to say, like, we feel totally confident of our financial accountability and financial stability. The only, the only question, if someone gave me the money for it, I would do it in a second. You know, and also, I'd be happy to have a site visit, too. I mean, we're really proud of what we do, and we've been doing it for twenty years, and we do serve a lot of kids from challenging circumstances really well. We'd love people to come see what we do. You know, if, if the money, you know, if someone gave me the money, I'd do it in a second. We're probably going to do it, I mean, I'll do it because you're going to ask us to, you know, so we'll...
No, hold on. So we have a lot more questions, and...
Yeah.
Because the state does give you quite a bit of money. In the last three years, it's been one point five million. So, I mean, that's what we talk about giving money. John?
Yeah.
I'd like to inquire a little bit about governance of the school, and especially Ms. Blake, because you have to leave, like, an opportunity to ask you some questions. How long have you been on the board?
Well, I just started on the board in October.
October.
I was one of the founders of the school also, and served in the beginning with our working board for the first year of getting the school planned and set up, and then...
So you've been on the board for about five or six months?
Yeah.
And you're now the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Or the co-chair, I guess?
Co-chair, yes.
And how long have other members of the board been on the board?
Well, it ranges from, I don't have the time.
Mr. Hutchinson, for example?
But it goes back, several people have been nine years, three years, you know, several student members are, you know, that's a short...
Of course, they turn over. When, when I went online to your website, about which I compliment you, this would have been in, after our last board meeting, so it would have been mid-March. I went to look for the board of directors and who was on it. I couldn't find any names. I've rarely seen a not-for-profit entity that receives one point five million dollars in state funds annually that doesn't...
Annually, fifty.
Fifty?
How much did you say?
In the last three years, it's been one point five, so roughly half a million.
Fifty some odd million that doesn't list its board of directors. It seemed to me quite strange. So am I right that they were not listed on your site in March?
Yeah, and the reason was because our website, which, thank you for your compliment, was just redone like a month or two ago.
Uh-huh.
And then the new website advice is clean up your websites and get rid of extraneous stuff, so that was, felt like the target market for the website was parents and prospective students. They don't really look at trustees. And the other thing is that they said, you know, things that are time-sensitive, things that change, like board, the board members, would have to keep being updated, so that was the advice we got. We put it back up there now. It is up there now. And again, that was, you know, that was a mistake of the advice we were getting at the time.
Well, the way you characterize mistakes is that they're sort of done to you, but as this, you're the, you're the director of the school, have been for a long time. So you're in effect the CEO of the school, and for you to just buy into advice of internet people without exercising your own judgment that, look, governance matters. My board matters. I want people to know who they are, and I don't care if it's a lot of work to update my board list. I just feel like you're sort of abdicating personal responsibility that, that one would expect in a CEO of twenty years' experience in running a not-for-profit entity that, that has revenues of fifty million dollars a year. That's, that's kind of concerning. Are you a member of this board?
No.
You're not?
No, I'm an employee of the school.
You have no ex officio relationship with the board?
I'm an employee, so I don't think I can be a member of the board.
That in itself is pretty unusual, but there are different arrangements. I guess...
But it attends all board meetings and visors.
Yeah, I can understand. I think the concern I'm here, I'm feeling is that you don't have a lot of financial horsepower or awareness on your board. When you explain to us that you have confidence in the school's finances because we have two hundred thousand dollars in our checking account, it sort of reminds me of my teenage dad who got, his son who got a notice in the bank of insufficient funds, and she says, Dad, I can't, I, I still have checks. I must be okay. I mean, it's sort of about that, to sort of base this on...
I looked at the checking accounts.
But that isn't where...
No, I know. I understand that, and I looked at the expenditures coming in and the money that's being paid out as a baseline. I also look at the quarterly financials, or every two months, financial statements that come out. The treasurer looks at the financial statements that come out, that people are aware of what's happening on the financial level. We do have a member of the board who works for Edward Jones, who reviews the statements also. There are people with a financial background that look at the board information and the budget and the statements. It's not like, oh, nobody ever looks at it or pays attention, and it's not the way it is.
Again, what you've described is a cash system rather than an accrual system, and one of the things that was bothersome to me on this profit and loss, your budget versus actual, is I can't find the bottom line and the budget on the thing. That's very peculiar not to have a budget section which is different from your actuals and without showing your encumbrances. It's, do you folks use generally accepted accounting principles?
I believe we do. I mean, again, I'm not an accountant, but our bookkeeper uses, I think, the generally accepted accounting principles.
Do you use the chart of accounts that the department puts out, that the agency puts out? It doesn't look like it. What about the governmental accounting standards, boards standards? Do you use those?
I think we should get back to you with that information. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, and I'm not an accountant either, but our accountant can speak to that.
Jenna has a quick question.
Yeah. I just, your nine-nineties are there, I just saw on your website. So can you talk a little bit, I noticed Eric is the secretary of the board, he's also an employee, he's listed on the nine-ninety. So what's the role of the board? If he's, are they a governing board, is advisory board, and like, it kind of speaks to the capacity? Do you have employees, other employees on the board as well? Just Eric is a board member and employee?
Yeah. That is sort of a founding principle, that there be an employee on the board who speaks, you know, because we have a leadership model that includes teachers as part of the leadership team.
Okay.
And so that was, there's a student members on the board, and there's a faculty member on the board. And so they're a governing board.
Okay.
And he's the one teacher representative.
On the board.
Yeah.
John?
I guess to get to the bottom point of the discussion, I feel like the, the school has failed in its obligation to give proper notice to the agency of changes, any, the language in your approval is any changes that occur in enrollment programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. And I, I would suggest that it could be at least the conclusion of this board, that the school in question has failed to meet that obligation. Going forward, that would be, ought to be, I think, perhaps kept in mind at the time that the submission for approval. I don't know that there's any, any clear consequence for failing to meet that standard. There are no penalties for it, but it...
They say it's contingent.
But it is contingent. And so strictly speaking, you could be found not to be in compliance with your, with your approval currently, and that, of course, would be very serious for you.
So we've had a lot of discussion about this, and I just want to get to the crux of, on that page three, the document that was prepared by the A O E. If the state board reasonably believes that an approved independent school lacks financial capacity to meet its stated objectives during the period of their approved status, we need to notify the school in writing and then give time to respond. And if we aren't satisfied by the response, then there's step two. And I just want to hear from board members, I'm hearing from John, that he is not feeling that even the current approval is being met. And then when it jumps into this not finding, following your federal state tax returns, we're seeing a lot of, we have a lot of questions, and there's not a lot of great data. Part of the state board is we are reassuring the public that their, their public dollars are being spent in a way that is, there are certain rules being followed, and it's hard to say, yes, we feel it's financial capacity, when there's just not a lot of evidence to give us that statement. So as a public assurance, with the state dollars, I guess we would then have to, as a board, decide what action do we want to take, and if there's a motion to be made to make such an action that would maybe express some of our concerns in writing to the school to start the process. And where do people stand?
I'm not, I don't...
Yeah, Kim?
Krista, I'm prepared to make a motion right this second. I'm not sure that I heard, in addition to the questions around governance, the procedures that may have been put in place subsequent to this that would alleviate some of our concerns for how this is not dependent on the institutional knowledge of someone either present or not to be responsible year over year, filing over filing, audit over audit, to ensure practice moving forward. Is that something that has been part of the work that's happening?
Yeah. I mean, the, you know, again, a lot of these do depend on people, so there is, you know, the board chairs and the organization of the information that gets passed on from board chairs, and we have a yearly calendar in our administrative office of things that this wasn't on. You know, we have, when the summer mailing goes out and other kinds of, you know, things, administrative tasks, but the most important one that's outside of our organization is contracting with the accounting firm who did the nine-nineties to be our nine-ninety form filer, which we hope they will, you know, follow through with, you know, if we didn't contact them first, they would contact us. And that was, that was the, I think, the biggest sort of outside check, you know, previously we had someone contacting the business office, then we didn't. And so there was no one asking for those outside the organization, you know, and then certainly I know, you know, differently now when we know the funding rates, you know, so it's a series of different personnel, hopefully, you know, with multiple checks, and then an outside organization that's a professional accounting firm.
I appreciate that it sounds as though lessons have been learned, but the biggest standout for me in that is that there are not financial policies and procedures in place in light of this, and I know those might not happen immediately, but I'm hearing, we hope, and there are three or four different people who are going to triangulate this and hopefully not miss it next time. So that is a concern that I would think speaks to potentially financial capacity right now, and would, I'd be interested in seeing that addressed in a very clear way regarding procedures and policy, at least in my interest of the public good of dollars that would be invested.
So what, a letter from the accountant who would ask to be taking on the nine-ninety process?
I think it goes beyond the nine-ninety for my satisfaction would be policy and procedures, who's in charge of what, and who's responsible for what?
Right.
In the operations of the school. I've served on preschool boards where we had procedures as treasurer, as a parent, as treasurer on that, where we, when that got passed to the next parent who did that, there was a policy manual that spoke to our financial procedures and made sure that those things were happening very systemically.
That'd be even writing.
So a written policy.
Well, can I follow up on your, you know, it seems like the responsibility for it is being outsourced to auditors and accountants.
You can, too.
And, or the board chair, and I realize the board chair signs the documents at the end of the day, but it's really, you know, it's the people that are, that are there from eight in the morning until five in the afternoon that really do this work. So I guess... guess, I'm not getting the right answer. And I'm not saying what you should answer, but it's got to be an internalized responsibility because your auditors, I mean, audit firms go out of business, you change them. Same thing with accountants, you know, it's easy to fire an accountant when you get mad at him. So, you move on to a different accountant. And so, I guess the.
But the administrative calendar that states who's responsible for which tasks and when would address that of having a.
But I guess my question is, is when the 990 doesn't get, doesn't get filed, who gets put in the stocks? And you can't do the accountants or the auditors. So, that's the question. Who ultimately is responsible for this?
Bill?
You two have brought up a bunch of questions and concerns. And I think, I'd like to reiterate that financial policies, and apparently you don't have a policy manual on finances, but it certainly looks like one is needed. And also, the CPA, there are CPAs and then there are CPAs. Some have small capacity, some are very huge organizations, and they vary a great deal. And they vary according to whether they can do school books, are familiar with them or not. Do you know if your new accountant has a Vermont CPA license, for example?
Yeah, I believe they do, yeah. And he, and he works with schools, my understanding.
Who's that?
Larry Reed in Chester.
I think that, that on balance, the board should consider adopting a resolution or a finding, going to propose that we think about adopting a finding that says the state board reasonably, this is in, reading from the language in what Emily gave us, that the state board reasonably believes that an approved independent school lacks financial capacity to meet its stated objectives, so on and so forth. When I think about that language, I, the dialogue that both John and Kim just led you through, I think really does go to financial capacity. Not about money, not that you don't have $200,000 in your checking accounts. What you don't seem to have is the leadership in your CEO and within your organization that understands the importance of fiduciary responsibility and takes it very seriously. You are a $50 million a year business and you're operating like a mom and pop store that no one needs to know much about. And it just feels to me that you, you need to kind of improve significantly your procedures. You're relying on people. Well, people isn't all it takes to run an organization. Process and procedures and a set of very clear expectations is what it takes. And you don't have those, as evidenced by this mess up with the 990. And who knows, that could be, it would suggest that there are a lot of procedures missing. Your board's way of ascertaining the financial security of the company, of the organization, I'm sure it's very well intended and it's very conscientious, but it's not systematic. And it's, and so, what I guess I'm inclined to say is that, that if one defines financial capacity as the ability to effectively manage the finances of the institution, I would say you're not as strong there as you need to be. If you were a private entity, it would be none of our business. You're not. You take $50 million a year of taxpayers' money. I suppose you do great things with it, but you, there's not the process in place to assure that you're managing those funds properly.
So, John, is that a motion that you're making?
Okay, after all that long, we're in this, I, yeah, we're not going to have to listen to it if we don't do something about it. Yeah, so I'm moving that we, we find that the board, that the school has, lacks financial capacity to meet its stated objectives and that, that we make that finding.
And in the second part, do you want to say writing a letter to that effect?
Yeah, do the whole bit, that we would then notify you in writing to that effect. And then that will kick into effect the next paragraph of our procedure.
John, do we have a second first before we have, or do you have a clarifying question of the motion?
Clarifying question, since there's a process for it and we're putting them on notice, should it say lacks financial capacity or may lack financial capacity?
Reasonably believes.
Reasonably believes, okay, okay.
So, there's a second by John. Yes.
Can I just make a correction for the record, with all due respect, we're not a $50 million company. We're less than $1 million and we receive about $500,000 a year from the state. That's a, that's a huge difference.
Well, there is, yeah.
Yeah, so it's 1.5 million over three years.
Oh, pardon me.
Yeah.
It's your say, yeah.
Yeah, 50 million, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not that a million, not that a million is nothing, but I, I mean, that's a very.
Yeah, yeah.
It's half a million dollars a year.
Thank you for correcting.
Between half a million and 600,000.
Or the decimal point the other way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize.
So, questions or comments on the motion that's on the table?
I just have a point of, just a question. Can that be clarified in the sense that I can see the public would think, oh, they're out of money if they saw that in the headline, as opposed to the systems that need to be in place are not adequate? I think is a different statement.
Let me, point of order.
Yeah.
When there's a motion on the table, the board, but I do have a similar question. Sorry, I'm not trying to cut you.
No, that's fine.
Just trying to maintain some. I do, personally, in the response, I would like to see, I understand there's the, the issue of the actual dollar signs, but I'd really like to see some real laid out procedures.
And I think just what John said, the ability to effectively manage.
Yes.
The finances. And so, when we write the letter, I think we'd have to take this discussion and take all those pieces out of that to put it into the letter for things that we're concerned about. I've heard a lot of different issues from this board, just the, making sure the paperwork, was it done?
Process and procedures, I think, are the two words that come to mind.
That are internal to the school.
Yes.
And based at the school.
Yep.
Internal to the school.
You know, what kind of accounting practices are they going to adopt? What sort of audit policies are they going to have year from year? It sounds like the audit process is more, oh, should we do one or not? I mean, is there a policy that they're going to do it every so often or every year? I'd like to see things like that. I think an audit would be a super idea.
And I think, and again, we can't manage how this gets reported. We just have to do what we're following. And it's saying reasonably believe and financial, lacking financial capacity. So, is there any discussion on this motion, Bill?
If we pass this motion which says reasonably believe, then the school has a reasonable opportunity to respond.
Exactly, yep.
And I'm thinking timelines here. Times disappearing fast and this needs to be cleaned up very quickly and, and very thoroughly. And so, I'm just wondering, should we put some kind of deadline in here? Or else, basically, we're saying they don't have the financial capacity that fundamentally puts them out of business unless we have some kind of plan and some kind of timeline here. And I would say that this has to be straightened out by before school starts.
Right. And I think where this process that would start is this, number one is the letter. It'd be the opportunity to respond from the school. And if the response wasn't what this board wanted, then the next step would be putting together a review team. And that review team would, would go to the school. So, we could, as a state board, get this letter out by early next week, which would give them a month before our next board meeting. And then, at the next board meeting, we could get the response and, and see if we think that then meets the concerns we have. If it meets those concerns, the board may decide to not take the next step. Or if we are not satisfied, we could take the next step of forming committee that would go and investigate.
Could I make a suggestion on Bill? I mean, in order to get, in order to get everything heading in the right direction, there's a lot of work here.
Yes, it is.
But I guess by the next meeting, I'd like to see a preliminary response saying, this is what, this is what we're planning to do.
And that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I'd like to see them, I'd actually like to have them, I mean, not that I'm going to approve or disapprove of it, but I'd like to know that, okay, they did get their financial operations manual done. But I'd like to see at least a list of everything they think they need to do to respond to our concerns. I don't know, they're never going to be able to get everything done by the next week, but at least an interim response.
And that would have to be inside of two weeks because we would need some time to process it and run through it from our side.
So, maybe something, I mean, we can see with the timing, when it comes to the, it might not be the next meeting or the meeting after, but we can see how the school, what time they need once they get our letter. Yeah.
So, in thinking about the timing again, how long before it's, the IRS has approved your back retro declaration of nonprofit status? How does this run up against their reauthorization? And so, I'm mindful of where we sit with the timeline for our decision on this and whether that runs concurrent or in potential conflict to the work that the agency is doing to reauthorize.
That continues as it was, should be unaffected.
But in practical terms.
Right.
Would it be approved if all these things remain outstanding?
Well, I think, again, we're in sort of uncharted waters here, especially with the reauthorization. So, I think there, to even answer that question, we have to know what we're going to do with this on the motion about, because once it would start this, it would start a process. I don't think right now we could guarantee what the timeline is going to be, but we can guarantee that we can get a letter out by early next week, give them time to respond. And so, maybe that will get done in time for our next meeting, maybe not. But I don't think we, at this point, can lay out a strict timeline with these unknown factors.
I would, I just want to be sure that, or I want to ask you, would, do you all concur though that it's, we are not in any way saying that the school's approval to operate is currently, the status has not changed, that it has authority to continue to operate until such time as it's determined that you don't? And, and that's not likely to be before the end of the school year.
No, no. I mean, that's what this is really, just again, putting our concerns in writing. That's part of the process. All these concerns that people have raised around the table and starting a process. And it may end at the next meeting if we get response that is sufficient, or we may choose to go another route and, and form a committee.
Well, I'm hoping, so I guess my, I'm, I'm hoping that they can respond to these concerns. It sounds like that's possible.
Yeah.
But what if, I mean, I guess my concern is that, you know, we're in April and September. It really isn't that far away. So, that's what, I assume you start in August, September. I just don't want to create, I'd like to move.
But this is nothing, in here questions their status as of right now. This is just putting concerns in writing.
No, I get that, but.
And then the second one is with establishing a committee, that does not also, I mean, that doesn't take away their status. It's forming a committee.
No, I understand. I just really want to be mindful to not create a crisis later by, by having to make a last minute decision.
And I think that may come about if we take a second vote, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, it does.
And that's something.
I'm not saying I have a solution to it. I'm just trying to keep in my own head here that, that school year is a very particular thing.
Rapidity is their imperative as much as ours.
Absolutely.
Exactly. So, are we prepared to take a vote now? And all of those in favor of initiating, writing a letter to compass expressing our reasonable belief that it lacks financial capacity when it comes to effectively managing the finances and evoking the letter, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. So, we will get a letter out to the school in putting, writing some of our concerns.
And can I ask a couple of questions?
At this point, no, sir. We've taken a lot of time with the agenda, but definitely if you want to follow up later, I'm willing to do that. But, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks. At this point, if we could just take a quick break, we're over by quite a bit. If people need just a 10 minute quick bathroom break, we'll come back at 11:30. Thank you. So, I know that, that went quite a bit over, but I think that was important. As a board, we've never encountered sort of that situation and to really delve through it. So, that did sort of shorten the time we're going to have for strategic vision planning work groups. And what I had envisioned for this is a chance again to review a document, this is now getting very dated, this document, that was approved in February 2018. This was one of the last things we did before starting the Act 46 process and becoming all consumed. And we also have been waiting for new board members to, to come because if we're starting strategic planning, and we've been working our way slowly through this, but at the same time, knowing that we are having new board members come on and making sure their voice is reflected in this document. So, this document was created by myself, John Carroll, Bill Mathis, and Peter Pelz. We brought it forward to the board. And we looked at our old strategic plan and realized it was more of a vision, nothing really actionable in that. We'd spent time at the board retreat, I believe in, in 2017, even all the way back then, critiquing it and saying how we want to change it and coming up with what, what we want as our basic principles and then trying to move to something so we can make it more measurable. And so, we took a stab at this, have an introduction. And again, people, it's giving me a chance to rewrite this document. I think we've talked about this at our last meeting, that even since this document, now working on Act 46, we've learned so much about our educational system and, and more about it, more deeper examples. So, this is really subject to change quite a bit and to think about what's included, what's out. But if we could focus on page two and three, because the introduction, I think there's a lot of places that we could work on that together. But if we could get to the, to the really, to thinking of the overview of the strategic vision, and this will help us then make the plan. And again, I'm just going to read the overview and the three stools. So, the document Vermont Strategic Vision for Education aims to address the challenges and weaknesses in our state's outcomes, all the while building on extended the many assets and strengths of the pre-K through 12 education in Vermont. Looking ahead over the next five to 10 years, we see the challenges and opportunities facing education in three dimensions. And so, the way that we thought about this was a stool, was the idea of equity, excellence, and efficiency. And that was really a stool that you needed all three. And that you couldn't create more equity by reducing excellence, because that would be easy to do. Let's just lower the bar for everybody and then we'll, we'll call it equity. We also are saying that you can't move forward with equity and excellence without having some sort of efficiency and sustainability and to make that work. So, these were really the stools on which we wanted education policy anytime it came before this board to have, that this is, this is what needs to stand on. And these are the lenses that we look through as we're critiquing policies that we create and also a policy that's coming to us from the legislature. And so, today, what I want to do is to break into different groups and look at these categories, equity, excellence, and efficiency, and look at the definitions that we have here and how could we approve upon them. And maybe what needs to be added, changed, amended, are there things that we left out? I know it came up at our discussion when the students came from South Burlington and they looked at our equity and like, there's nothing here about race. And they were like, there's, you know, they looked towards that and, and saw that as a, as a missed opportunity. So, that may be something that we want to look at, is what do we mean by equity? What do we mean by excellence and efficiency? And just to get us all on the same page, when we've been thinking about equity, there is a couple of different definitions that have been, actually came about, I think, after this document with the ESA Plan, which is historically marginalized, which is a term that's used in the state plan that might be nice to make it consistent. With excellence, we've been referring to the Education Quality Standards, EQS, that was passed in 2015. So, also, as Stacy was leaving the board, she said to make sure we don't talk in letters all the time. So, that's why I was trying to spell it out, Education Quality Standards, EQS. And that's where, as a state board, we've really said, this is what excellent education looks like. And over the last, I'd say, three months, we've been looking at that document and reviewing it, what's in there, and maybe what potentially should be changed or amended, or what do we need to pay attention to as we're collecting data. And then with efficiency, it's this idea of how do we make our system sustainable? And how do we make sure that we can afford the amazing education that we want to give our students? So, if we could, I'm just looking at numbers. So, if we, they're smaller than, just, but maybe we can get into different groups and I'll just assign different people to mix up and to look at these definitions. And maybe if we could just look at all three, because we're going to be in much smaller groups. to be in much smaller groups, and so, and then we can report out for what things we would like to change or add. And I just want to match up new members with some returning members, so that way we maybe can ask some questions in there. So if, looking at the time, maybe we could take 15 minutes in, in small groups, and then we'll come back and report out on sort of where we stand with the definitions, just so, is there anything that is left out, do we need to put in, and how do we feel about those definitions? And then we can move forward with this document. So at this point, could, let's see, if we, I mean, there's so few, why don't we just do two groups? Does that make so, just a smaller conversation? So that way, maybe we'll do four over here, four over here, we can get together and go over these definitions, and then we'll just report out after 15 minutes. Does that work for everybody? Okay. All right, so, there you go. Let's come back together, and it's kind of nice having smaller groups today. It's nice. And at this point, just want to, we had two groups get together and talk about this document as is, and if we could now sort of share out what were some of our conversations, and that might have some cross pollination, maybe we could just kind of go back and forth, if we talk about equity, and the conversation is summarizing, how about we have this group over here, if you want to go first with equity, and then we can talk about, Callahan's going to represent our group and talk about equity. All right. And then just see what comes out of that conversation, and see how they're similar or different, and what thoughts we had.
We began wondering where the general definition of equity is happening in other places around the state, and not wanting to separately reinvent that definition, so thinking about that and gathering what we can around that, I think would be important. So there's a common understanding in looking at historically underserved, or as a broader category, rather than trying to make sure we didn't miss someone. And that, while that would be important, it would also be important to have some common understanding of who those groups are as we're thinking about it. So operationally, we know where we're expecting some reporting. And then we talked as well about like college and career readiness and flexible pathways, and some of the things that are unintentionally potentially causing there to be dual enrollment and preschool funding, unintentionally causing potentially greater inequity. So we didn't solve how to put this wording.
No, no, but that's great, that's the idea.
Those are, did I, what did I miss? Did I miss anything?
That's great.
Okay. Callahan, do you want to talk about our conversation with equity?
Yeah, so equity, just like a first basic thing, we looked at changing, Alma talks about career path of her slash his, just doing their, just changing the language there, simply doing that. And then we looked at, in kind of defining more the part regardless of socioeconomic background or disability, expanding that, those two terms, using historically marginalized, possibly just going to greater depth with that part, because that's a key component to it, just defining it more. Obviously, we don't want to speak too long, as John was saying, but just defining that a little bit better, and I don't know if anyone else. I was really into excellence, so I don't really remember a lot about equity.
Equity, I think one of the questions, and Mary Secretary, you can help us out, with the ESA Plan, when it says historically marginalized, what is the groups that are included in the ESA Plan for the state? So we could overlap and borrow that same language.
Yeah, I'm not that fluent with it, honestly, but yeah, I know, I know we have worked, I was remarking on, I think, pre-Act 46, the House Ed Committee wasn't, Peter would, you know, so there was like parallel work happening in the state at that time around this. And there's a work group inside the agency, and a lot of that work did end up informing the ESA Plan, but yeah, we definitely have some body of work inside the agency on that that I could share.
Yeah, and that goes with what I think you were saying over here, that let's not recreate something.
Yeah.
If this is the data that's being presented at the ESA Plan, that would make it easier for collecting data and be inclusive. Any other thoughts from anybody on this table about equity and any concerns from this definition?
I would just say that, is that, I sort of get a little uneasy about sort of our division of the whole world into identity groups and interest groups, when we're all just human beings, and that we have so much more in common than we have that's unalike. But when we talk about identity groups, we're sort of emphasizing the differences. I, I'm sort of interested in the term historically underserved, which is different than historically marginalized, and it's, it's an interesting distinction. We talked about marginalized. But there are people who are victims of marginalizing in our schools today, who are not part of a group called historically marginalized. In other words, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, what really is happening where the, kind of the rubber meets the road? What's really happening to individual kids in our schools by their experience, as opposed to being affiliated with a group called historically marginalized? I mean, I can think of friends of mine who clearly belong to a group called historically marginalized, but they're highly advantaged in the world, because of just a quirk of their family background, or something like that. A black classmate of mine at Harvard would be a perfect example. His group is historically marginalized, yet he himself, there's nothing marginalized about his entire life, except occasional social experiences. And it's sort of, so I guess I'm just, I don't have a better solution, I'm just sort of concerned about this sort of easy reliance upon, upon sort of identity politics that happens so much in our society today, at the risk of losing, or maybe somewhat at the risk of not paying attention to people just because they're there and they're, they're people. I'm not saying this very well, I apologize, and I don't have any, I don't have any better language to offer, so I.
And I don't know how you avoid, I don't know how you avoid the definition in here. And I think people move in and out of, of this category, like Mr. Carroll, and my relatives probably came from the same
Right.
piece of dirt
Right.
out in the Atlantic Ocean.
A disadvantaged group.
Historically a disadvantaged group, not anymore. I mean, Boston, where I moved from, is run by the Irish, almost exclusively, let's see. But I think that you have to address the issue, and there's, you know, and I think, John, there are different groups, like you have, you know, in many states, Portuguese is considered a socially disadvantaged group, yet they come from Europe.
Yep.
So I think, you know, they actually, at least in Massachusetts, they actually get contract assistance and things like that, they're carved out specifically. But I think the whole great thing about, about this or America is that, is that groups do move out of this category, I think, historically disadvantaged. So I, but I, I think we have to address it in here.
But.
But I understand.
So identity affects your education.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's where we need to get back to when it comes to equity, because it does. We have the students from South Burlington talk about, because of the race, they were impacted negatively, even by well-meaning people. Gender, I teach women's studies, I have students come in and tell me that they've had adults, teachers, tell them because they're a girl, they can't do math. That identity then affects, so I think those, that's when we think about identity and how it affects with the equity, we want to make sure someone's identity doesn't affect their education. And that's what equity to me is really about, is making sure that people that might have been not encouraged, I mean, as girls, were not encouraged to take math or science. And so to create equity, we need to make sure that they're being encouraged, and not only in their, in the fields of medic, in medicine. And so the idea that identity affects your experience, and if we don't recognize that, we aren't recognizing the challenges that our students are coming to education. It's a challenge if your parents don't speak English, and you're trying to access the education system, and then you're on your own. There's no one there guiding you. I mean, that, that is part of, part of equity, is that even if somebody at home is with a non-native English speaker, how do you then succeed? So in looking at if somebody hasn't, if their family members haven't gone to school, there's no support network there, so how do we make sure that there's a support network? And I, I mean, I just see it every day, that students' experience impact their education negatively, and how do we overcome that? And to me, that's what the equity piece is. And ideally, yes, we would all be the same, but we're not all starting from the same place and the starting line. So some people are a little bit further behind, and how do we make sure the school, we make sure we can use resources and programs to make sure that everybody's there.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else with equity?
On equity, we've seen the enemy, and it is us, in some regards. You're talking about the broader groups, which is more than just education, but I'd like to think about the inequities that we have built intentionally or unintentionally into the education system. Early education, we know what that one is, we were talking about tracking, we were talking about dual enrollment and so forth, and there's a half a dozen different programs in which systematically separate people. And maybe we need to go back and look at those.
So when we look at equity in this decision, is it not just, it's also in the structure of the education system, so that's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And is that something?
And that's something we can affect.
Okay, so something more systems-based too, that, I mean, we do, I'm living the nightmare of Act 166 right now, so.
Oh, as a parent?
As a parent, I am living that nightmare, and with my friends, trying to help, and it's just the inequities are becoming apparent over and over. Just even the way we set up our school, it's not set for working parents. I mean, it's just, it's really difficult.
I guess what they, that you're describing is, is, is any bias in the system that limits students' opportunities or outcomes. So even if you had, so, okay, so let's take the, the girl who is told, oh, you can't, you're not good at math, you're not going to be an accountant, but you could be a lawyer. Even that, in its own right, the option, limiting the option of an accountant and saying, well, you're going to be a lawyer, to me seems inappropriate, even if a lawyer is a very successful occupation. So I guess it's, I guess what you're describing is bias in the system that, that suggests that the student has limited career options or educational options.
I like what you said, the bias in the system to limit outcomes. And so, system means a lot of different things, too.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, it's actually bias among people, isn't it? I mean,
Yeah.
Systems don't have bias, human beings.
Those, people that create the systems have the bias.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily, I mean, like I said, it's not saying to one, one group of students who, who may have not have attended college in large numbers in the past, saying, well, you, you're not going to go to college, you're going to go to a, to some other program. And the, like I said, the high school girl who is told, well, math and science really isn't, isn't a girl thing, so here's some other really good options and careers. I think both of those are bad outcomes. And I think that just simply saying, I like the way that you described it versus sort of the, the discussion that we had earlier, where.
Yeah, that's a very interesting difference. One is sort of almost operational, using the word bias as saying, there is a behavior that is harmful, and it's, it, the rubric for it is bias, as opposed to saying, talking about cla, cla, groups of individuals, whether they're historically disadvantaged or anything else. It, it has the virtue, I think, of sort of, kind of placing an onus upon us to focus on what needs to change. And what needs to change is biased treatment of children.
Or, I think even the system, I'll give you an example. So if a bias, our systems right now are set up that there's a stay-at-home mother. And I tried to sign up Cora for some daycare or some preschool, it ends at 12:45. 12:45? Like, who does that? And they said, well, just find another stay-at-home mom to take the kids. The system was set up in the fact that there are stay-at-home moms to take the kids
Sure.
from the preschool. So we're setting up a system with this bias that people are staying home.
Sure.
And so, I guess if you're, that's what.
Moms are staying home.
And it was moms, I was told, find a stay-at-home mom.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was, that was, but if Bill, that's what I heard from Bill, is that, looking at the whole system and, and how that's set up, in that same system, another parent wanted to access pre-K for their child, but couldn't use that because they couldn't find daycare to make it work in their historically marginalized, their socioeconomic status. So couldn't use that same outcome. So that student is now not getting pre-K, and will not get pre-K because of the parent's socioeconomic status. And so that's when we look at the bias in the systems, how we set up these systems actually don't work for working families, which then end up disadvantaging the kids we're trying to help.
Hence my conclusion to have a single school district.
That doesn't change, it's hours of school day.
No, but at least it gets away with the micro variations that occur from like your town versus the next town.
Oh, I, I've looked at every town within South Burlington, some of them are four days a week for two and a half hours, some, I mean, it's, it's amazing.
But we've seen with some of the mergers, you know, some towns have 35 hours of pre-K, others have 10, so you merge them together, what do they do? You know?
Right.
We don't want to see districts dropping their commitment to pre-K as a result of merging.
Right. So I guess that's what, in this, are we looking at not just for the students' opportunities, but looking more at the system too, and how that system is creating? Because that's two different things. So you could be looking at programs like dual enrollment to help with kids going to school, but are you, is this board going to commit to looking at systems and how the systems are limiting outcomes for students?
Yeah. Well, but it would be interesting to sort of try to write two different versions of this.
Okay.
One articulated in terms of who are the impacted individuals, using terms like historically marginalized and so forth. And the other would be the more active way, which is to say, what is it about the design of the people, the systems and the people who created them that is not serving all children, regardless of their category or background? And the, there are two different ways of describing this, and it might be interesting to try it in either way.
So what I'm hearing is people in the system and the systems themselves?
Not exactly. The,
Okay.
It's the, the people and their systems on the one hand, as active agents of harmful decision-making, decision-making that doesn't serve some children very well. And then there's the other way of describing it, which is what we have, which is saying, we got to watch out for, for the victims. We got to watch out for the historically marginalized or others who are likely to be victimized by bias. And so, one is sort of describing results, and another is describing behavior, I guess would be the difference. The behavior is be mindful of bias and, and drive it out of your systems and out of your people. The other is to be concerned about victims. And I guess, I, I.
I don't know if it's victims or.
Well, or, if,
Yeah.
If, if a girl is told, well, you really, you're a girl, you don't do math, I think she's a victim. I think she's a victim of a bias.
Okay.
Or she's diserved by it, certainly. So maybe the term victim is too provocative, but we're talking about people who are, whose opportunities are being constrained by bias. So it depends on how much we want this to be characterizing outcomes as opposed to design, if you will.
Input, yeah.
Yeah, how, how we're going to.
And, I hate to complicate the whole, but I think some of the, some of the bias that's created, like in math, for example, is much broader than the school, it's in the media that, that kids watch.
Right.
Where it clearly shows, I mean, just recently, there's been some movies that have shown women in science, like the movie where the woman was critical in getting a man to the moon.
Right, right.
But up to that point, when you watch movies about great scientific achievements, it usually includes a guy in charge. So I think some of, some of what we're talking about is really hard, I think it is changing, but if the school system can adapt better, I think that's great, but there's other things that are, there's other things that are messaging people. And I think that's why, I think it's true that, that girls in, in the lower grades outachieve boys in math, and then eventually somehow we catch up and, and pass, and pass girls. And at some point, there's a flip there. Is that right, Mr. Secretary?
I wouldn't want to affirm anything.
Not anymore, okay. All right. I go.
Thank you for your thoughts, but yeah.
Yeah, Tim.
I don't sure if it's true.
I just hear sort of broad categories around defining the who inequity and the what inequity, so I sort of see it.
Emily Simmons could read off what we have in our ESA Plan, if you'd like to hear.
Oh, okay, you got it?
Yeah, specifics. Specifics.
Some of you will remember this from, that don't shudder, from the Small Schools Grant Conversation. So the historically marginalized group in our ESOP plan was sometimes called a supergroup. And it was, there were two purposes. One was, we thought this was the right thing to do, to highlight these groups. And the other was that you could aggregate those groups and have more reportable data rather than just one or the other. So here is the, sorry, I went away from the list because I was reading. Here's the list. This is directly from the plan. Marginalized students are those students who have been historically underserved by educational institutions for any one or more than one characteristic, including ethnic and racial minorities, English learners, students with free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities, students who are migrant, foster, or homeless. And then historically privileged students is the other group, are those students who have none of the listed characteristics associated with being underserved.
So no reference to gender or sexual orientation?
And if I do my counting right, we have a majority of minorities.
Majority minorities, if you're doing.
More than 50% of the kids are in one of the historically disadvantaged groups.
Oh, I think that's a question outside of what I'm able to read off of the state plan right now. Also, I'm not the person in the agency who works on the state plan. I'm the person who did the Google for you in that row.
We appreciate the Google. Now, just before we, I mean, this is part of a bigger conversation. I guess, would we want to go over quickly excellence and efficiency or reserve that for next meeting? Or what are people's thoughts around lunchtime? Do you want to take just a quick report out and maybe hold off on the discussion just so we can report out what's fresh in our, in our minds? And then we can come back to this next time? So why don't we quickly just report out with excellence? Do you want to start this time, Callahan?
Sure. So with excellence, we focus on probably a really much bigger conversation. But the idea of how much, are you really excellent if you have students getting straight A's? Kind of focusing more on, should we be focusing more on the grades or what's actually happening in the classroom? We talked a lot about the idea of students' well-being. Like, are you achieving excellence if you have all your, a majority of your students are getting straight A's, but they're suffering from anxiety, depression, substance abuse? Kind of this idea of, do you define excellence by the outcome? Or what is actually happening within the classroom and students' mental states and their ability to have happiness and feel calm and supported within their school, not just their GPA? Kind of that larger conversation of how does well-being of students fit into excellence?
And over here? We were, spent a little time talking about excellence versus quality. And we hadn't actually spoken, I don't think in either case that we were talking about just grades. But that excellence could be more subjective and that it's, my excellence might be different from Callahan's excellence. Or, you know, our own definitions make that difficult to measure and monitor. So are there quality standards that do exist that could be measured and monitored so that we're creating a strategic vision that can be followed? And so we spent a little time on that. And it doesn't flow as easily as equity, excellence, and efficiency. But it, that was a word that we thought might better capture what that section or that leg of the stool could do.
Just so we can get to lunch. John, do you want to talk about efficiency real quick? Do you want to summarize our conversation? Or do you want Callahan to do it?
Callahan.
Callahan, go for it.
Did we talk about it? I don't really think we did, like. I think it was more John. John was a fan of that one.
That's why I was saying, if John was.
I think John just saw that one.
All right, well, so, so we talked about the, the sort of sustainability. And what we have is economically kind of an unsustainable set of trends, where our school population graph looks like this and the staffing graph looks about like that over the last 20, 25 years. And you should get this gap where basically we're, we're sort of, we're, we're spending more than we can afford to spend, the result being that we have very, very high tax levels. And we're at risk of sort of, what I would call sort of a death spiral where the, and it, it is not getting a lot better. It's, it's flattening off or continuing to get worse. So we talked about what, what structural changes could you make to the way you do education so that you could start to bend the curve a little bit on cost? So that costs tracked more with, with, with populations as opposed to just whatever the forces are today? So we talked about, you know, why do we need 60 different curriculum coordinators in the state? Does that, does that mean we get something, curriculums that are 60 times better than we would if we had one curriculum coordinator in the state? And so we got thinking about Dan's blueprint and, and how that would move us to maybe sort of regional collaboration. We also talked about kind of spoken hub school design where, where the technical centers could become regional centers for more than just technical education, but maybe for advanced AP courses and others that smaller high schools can't offer. So I think we were saying, if there's, if there's any way to attack efficiency, it's going to have to be system, system design. As opposed to saying, well, you just need fewer teachers or something like that. I mean, that, that isn't going to get it.
This group over here?
We, we honed in on sustainability as well. And we brought into the conversation the shared financing of the human services efforts happening within our schools. And that collaboration, recognizing schools to be sometimes the safest, best place for the delivery of those services, but not necessarily the sole responsibility financially of our school districts. And I think that's part of what causes student population in this direction and, and staffing to stay. We, we are adding to it what needs to be delivered in our schools. And that needs some way to be recognized and reconciled, I think.
And that, we touched upon that, too, in the wellness discussion, where, again, back to Dan's blueprint, the idea of bringing social services into the school facility and being part of addressing both the wellness and, and the academic needs of the children.
So at this point, I want to thank everybody because we've gone over by about 15 minutes. But we reined it back in because we were quite over by a while. And just taking our chance to have a break and have lunch. Right now, we're scheduled to come back at 1:15. But why don't we say 1:25? Just so everybody gets the time that they need for lunch. And a part of wellness is making sure you eat. So taking that time for the break. So if we could say 1:25, we'll come back and from lunch. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so if we could come back from lunch. And we have a guest, Jay Ramsey, who's going to be here talking to us about the CTE, strategic vision and goals. And, and this has really been a long time in coming. I mean, I think we've been having you come for the last three years, at least, talking about this. Talking about how the, really, the vision for CTE is outdated in the state of Vermont. The rules are over 25 years old, correct? When it comes to CTE, don't include anything about career pathways. And impetus of this is also that Perkins was reauthorized at the federal level. I think there was some, I think for at least two years, we were just waiting for Perkins. That was, it's going to get reauthorized. It's going to get reauthorized any month now. And then two years go by. And so this is sort of building on that process. So thank you for coming in and bringing these strategic direction. And especially newborn members, maybe going through the process, I think would be helpful, too. But, and if you want to just introduce yourself for the record, and we'll get started. Thanks.
Thanks for having me. Jay Ramsey, Agency of Education. I'm the State Director for Career Technical Education and the Assistant Division Director for the Student Pathways Division. And I'm joined behind me with the three members of the CTE team. John Nelson is our Data and Reporting Coordinator. Oscar Aliaga is our Career Pathways Coordinator. And Doug Webster is a CTE Coordinator, Perkins expert. Anything and everything, we do it all. There's four of us to support the whole state. Thanks for having us. So I'm going to pass around a little document from the archive. I, I think Secretary French likes this.
I love these, yeah.
This is one of the original vision documents created in 1947 by Governor Mortimer Proctor that created the regional technical education system that we have today. So I'm going to, I want it back.
Make sure our hands are clean.
Should we wear white gloves?
I know.
We still use it today to inform our.
Whenever there's a question, we come back to that document.
Pulled it out last, last night.
Other educational system.
That's it.
So I know that there are some new board members. Welcome, new board members. I understand you are the Executive Director of NECA. I used to be on the Board of NECA a long ago when I lived in Lindenville. So I'm going to give you a little information about the technical education system in Vermont. The state is divided up into regions. And each region is served by, in most cases, one technical center. And that technical center serves all the high schools in the region. It's primarily geared toward 11th and 12th graders. We do have introductory courses for 9th and 10th graders. And as this document is going around, you'll see that it was envisioned in 1947. And in another slide, I'll tell you when it became a reality. So in your earlier conversation, I think you were talking about the declining population. So I want to show here the, the trend in the tall line is the trend down in 9th and 10th grade population in the state. The smaller ones is the, the percentage or the number of students that are in introductory programs. So in the last decade, that has increased from 6.3% of the available population to about 11 and a half percent. When we come to the 11th and 12th grade populations, again, you see the decline. But we have gone from, a decade ago, 25.9% participation of the available population, is how I talk about it, to about 29.30%.
The total numbers have stayed about the same. It's just mainly the, the number of students, all students, has declined.
The proportion of students available has declined. So the, just a little bit of a context. So technical education is on the cusp of education and workforce development. So we have our feet in two worlds. Our primary goal is to get students interested in jobs that are in Vermont. Of course, we want students to stay here and contribute to the economy. But we also want them to be successful if they choose to leave the state. And our programs are aligned with the labor market. Our programs are also connected at the post-secondary level to apprenticeship programs that's run through the Department of Labor and through dual enrollment courses at the colleges. So CCV and VTC, our faculty in the CTE programs use the curriculum to teach dual enrollment courses in the technical centers. So a little history slide. The system was envisioned in 1947. It was part of our post-war strategy. 67% of high schools offered some sort of vocational education, mostly in the form of agricultural education. There were 20,000 students in the secondary ed system. And by the way, that year was the, let's see, the first instant camera was demonstrated in 1947. In 1967, that regional system became a reality. The federal government started giving more money to states to fund technical education. And the State Board enacted these rules that govern the system. The first ATM was put into service in 1967. I'm giving you information about the technology and how it's changed because that's part of what we should be talking about. And I think the Secretary has been talking about this, too. In 1998, I think our program standards were, that was the last time they were updated. That's also when Bill Clinton was president. Maybe you remember that. Perkins III was enacted. And then a few years later, the State Board changed the rules to align with Perkins IV. 1998, Google was founded. So fast forward to today, we have personalized learning, college while in high school. There's 22,140 students in secondary ed. Everyone has a device. We are talking about drones and robots and artificial intelligence. There's global competition for jobs. This is the environment that we live in and that the CTE centers exist in. This is a, a little bit of the, why are we needing to have a vision? Things have changed in the last five years. These are all of the laws that have been passed, both at the federal and state level, that have some impact on career technical education. And every year, the legislature wants to do something with it. And I think the agency thinks it's important for us to have a little bit of a framework around what are those policies? And so as the Chair mentioned, Perkins V, also known as the Strengthening Career and Technical Education Act for the 21st century, came into effect last year. It starts on July 1st. So we're working to develop a state plan. I'll highlight Act 189, which calls for four pilot projects centered around technical centers that looks at funding and governance. But those centers have to propose projects. We have a May 1st deadline for the next round of proposals. We have one project already approved in Springfield. So as I'm presenting about the vision, you may ask, you want to know about funding because maybe you've heard that that's an issue. And I hold it out that, yes, we're looking at it. And there's a process in place for it. So it's part of the conversation. So just so that you have the information right now, the vision for CTE that was developed in this process that I'll tell you about is that all Vermont learners attain their post-secondary goals by having access to post, to career and technical education systems that are equitable, efficient, integrated, and collaborative. And I think we talk about education systems because we want to talk about technical education as not something that happens in a, a place, but it's a type of education that could happen anywhere. Whether it be a high school or a technical center or a middle school somewhere, anywhere. We have five goals. The student is at the center of our goals. Everything we do has the student in the center. And so one of our goals is to support only high-quality, rigorous, aligned CTE, career pathway programs that are informed by available state, New England, regional, and national labor market data. The second goal is to improve the public perception of CTE. We did a survey that gave, gave us lots of information about what the public thinks about CTE. And it also said what they don't know about CTE. The next slide, the next goal is to, to treat industry as a partner. Our industry partners that participate in the process said, we want you to tell us what to do. what to do. We want you to ask us to do things. We wanna be in the schools. We wanna help." So it's sort of encouraging from an industry side to, to say, "We wanna help. Tell us what to do." And these last two goals are really goals that will directly benefit students in the system. So developing and implementing career advisement systems that support career exploration and that allow all learners to be successful in a pathway of interest. And the final goal, which really aligns with what you were talking about right before lunch, is supporting collaboration among systems and promoting coordination between systems as a means of ensuring equity and of providing students with high-quality experience. And I will share some anecdotes when I ask students about this. So a process overview, last year, in February, we contracted with Advanced CTE, which is a national organization, formerly the State CTE Directors Association. We contracted them to come and help us with this process. And there are two phases, information gathering and an advisory committee. In the information gathering stage, we conducted phone interviews, 30-minute interviews with these individuals who were students in the system, parents, people who had worked in the system or are currently working in the system, and policymakers. And I think Krista was interviewed, as was the chair of the State Workforce Development Board. The takeaways from the interviews were that understanding the potential of CTE for helping learners in the state, that they believe the statewide system does a good job of preparing learners for success, they believe that changes should be made to allow CTE to be deliverable in more flexible and effective ways, that CTE should be more integrated with academic courses and programs, and they know that more must be done to advance equity, particularly for low-income students and students with disabilities. They identified sort of consistently this inconsistency in graduation requirements across the state that affects technical education. They talked about the access for 11th and 12th graders. And so there, this is a rich source of information for us. The next source of information is this perception survey that went out around this time last year. We asked 50 questions. It was open for three weeks, widely disseminated through our networks, social media, technical centers. They posted it on their websites, their community members were involved. So I was expecting 800 responses. We got about 1,500 responses. And we left a place for open-ended comments. And so this, the 600 comments that we received and that I spent a whole weekend reading through to I see what people were saying and to identify themes. So it's, it's a, it was a rich source of information for informing the vision and the goals, and it remains a rich source of information for what our strategies could and should be as we move forward to change how CTE works in Vermont. The top five commented areas, in case you're wondering, were about offering CTE earlier, including access for middle grades, for exposure and exploration of careers. It was about funding. It was about improved communication and outreach about technical education, career pathways in dual enrollment. It was about using New England labor market information, and about parent education about the job market and the value of CTE. All of these are drivers for how, you know, students make decisions and what's available in their regions. In case you're interested in a distribution by county, Rutland, Washington, Chittenden, and Orange County were the ones that had the most responses. We didn't have anyone from Essex County say anything, and we had no out-of-state responses. This is a distribution by role. We asked questions about what role are you in the system? Are you a policymaker? Are you an elected official? Are you a parent? Are you a student? Do you work in a school? And so about a third of our responses are parents or students. And a half of the remaining respondents have a role in the education system, as a teacher or a non-classroom teacher or an administrator. And I'll just summarize this portion by saying the data that we collected has also been used in the creation of a research paper that Oscar authored and presented at the AERA, American Educational Research Association, a couple of weeks ago in Toronto, about perceptions of CTE in modern times and looking at a connection between the perception of CTE and the per-capita income of each county. Is there a correlation between per-capita income and a perception? So he got to present about that while I pushed the buttons at my desk. So we have all this data. What did we do with it? I had a steering committee that helped me decide what the next steps would be, and I had an advisory meeting in Burlington that was attended by a cross-section of people similar to the individuals that were interviewed. This is a picture of us at the end of our long workday of identifying the strategies. And so this group is made up of people in the workforce development arena, people in education, technical center directors. You'll see Pat Moulton is there, the president of Vermont Technical College. Joyce Judy was there, the president of Community College of Vermont. We have five representatives from industry. They represented four sectors of Vermont's economy that are critical, manufacturing, healthcare, information technology, and construction. And so these are the individuals that helped us come up with what the goals should be. They're aspirational in nature. I'm sure you understand that from the way that I was talking about them. And so in all of this, I think you've only heard me say that we heard from two, two students directly in interviews and some students in the surveys. And I wanted to hear what students would say about what our goals, what, what the adults came up with as goals. And so I set out on a listening tour in September, and four technical centers volunteered to host me while I interviewed students who were second-year students, so they'd been through some technical education already and had a perspective about it. And I spoke, so those students were from 20 different high schools. There were 150 students that I spoke to and about 30 teachers. And so I'm gonna give you a few anecdotes. I have three pages of notes of anecdotes that they've given me to support the two goals that I highlighted for you, career guidance and collaboration and coordination. And so when, when I asked about career advising, they said, "In high school, they should talk more about life-related things, but it's nice having one place where you can focus on your career." And career counseling hardly happens at my high school. The first time I really learned about careers is when I got to go to the tech center. And I emphasized the last part of that, I got to go to the tech center, because that's the mindset of these students that come to the technical centers. I get to go here, not I have to go here. And I heard that through and through comments, that they're excited to go there, they're engaged, they, they feel like it, it's their path. When I asked students about what's the coordination or the collaboration like between your home school and here, they give examples like, "My high school has a science requirement that means that I have to leave my culinary program, which has science in it, to go take this science class, and I miss out on the lab portion of my culinary program." Another one, when they're talking about interfacing with their guidance counselor. It's like, "CTE is a magic word you have to use with your guidance counselor to open the door for them to talk to you about coming to the technical center." And so these are just, you know, a couple of examples, but through and through, I heard students say, "It's difficult in this way for me to get here. The graduation requirements get in the way. It's not clear how I'll get to graduation." A whole list of things that I heard from students that are things that we can fix. So all of this information is provided to say, I think it was a very thorough process. I feel confident that we heard good information from students and we have actionable things. When it comes to creating a state plan for Perkins V, I think we have some, we have these five goalposts that are gonna help us prioritize what we should be doing in Perkins to accomplish our goals. You may have noticed that there was not a specific goal about equity. And the steering committee had a long conversation about that. Should we have a sixth goal that's about equity? And we landed on, it shouldn't have a separate goal. It should be woven in every strategy in every goal. So as we work to reach the goals, our strategies will change, but we will always have an equity lens in those strategies. And these are some examples of strategies that we came up with. They're very wordy, so I'll skip through them if you want to engage in the question part of this presentation. I'll move on to the next one about industry as a partner, asking them to assist in career guidance, exploration activities, and work-based learning, asking them to identify credentials of value, both as part of our pathway development and articulation of students at the post-secondary This one is a big one, as it's mentioned in the education quality standards around career On this one, one of our strategies was to work with the School Counselors Association to put on conferences for them. So Oscar has been spearheading this work to help partner with them to put on their annual spring conference, which is focused on CTE and pathways and bias in counseling. There's a lot of work to do in this area, both specifically in CTE and as part of our cross-team work in the Student Pathways Division, implementing personalized learning plans, aligning graduation requirements, making sure that the technical center programs are connected to those graduation requirements. And this one, publishing an annual report. It seems like an easy thing to do, but we don't do it. So putting information out there that the public can consume to better understand what CTE is and what it does. And then so I'll just come back to the summary of our goals. And the vision.
Just quickly, in the green sheet that was provided to us, we have the strategic, if you can go back to the different goals themselves, but we don't have what's listed on each slide there. So if you could go back to say, the goal for supporting only high-quality, rigorous, alignment CTE career pathways.
So I made this slide as a, just a simple way to state each one. It's, the words are intended to summarize what is in the, the green sheet.
Well, I'm saying so, and if I look here, I have the vision and goals, and then it breaks down the vision and goals, and it goes to, so say, go to goal B, and then it talks about in the law where we're supposed to do that. I'm just not seeing, if you go back to that slide, like if you go to the second goal.
Looking for the strategies?
Yeah, the strategies.
Okay.
Yeah, so we didn't get that in our packet. It's just that, it was almost missing for me when I was looking at it, 'cause here are these goals, but what's the strategies? And so I was left wanting more, and I'm seeing it up there. I'm just wondering if we could get that with all the slides.
Sure. So the, we haven't finalized all of the strategies. I was, I wanted to include them, so you had some examples of what we're thinking about. I have draft strategies that's four or five pages long that I could share.
That'd be great.
With you, to give you some examples.
Questions from the board? Bill?
Well, I have to confess to having certain strange credentials in this area. First, I was on a technical advisory committee, then I was actually on the faculty of a technical school in Glassblowing, and I'm a graduate of a technical program. I know more about vacuum tube radios than anybody ever wants to know, which gets to the question of how in the world do you keep things current? I'm looking at your goals and vision, and I see them as being very general and everybody could agree to them. But I keep worrying about how's things gonna change? And when I did go to look at the national labor force projections and the Vermont labor force projections, I couldn't get them to match. I couldn't get them to match with the tech ed stuff. And then we're seeing tremendous changes that are going on.
Yes.
And the programs we see today will not be the programs of tomorrow.
Yes.
So the question is, is how do you get more specific here and how do we look towards building a program for the future?
Well, I think my perspective, it's good to have the generic goals and have some strategies that can change and be updated with the times. I would also say that having Oscar on board as the career pathways coordinator, to have someone on staff who can work with centers to develop their curriculum is not something that we've had in a decade. And so I see it as his job, it's, it's all of our job to update the programs, but specifically in advanced manufacturing, and he's working on a pathway in cybersecurity. And to work with the Department of Labor to understand what those projections mean for Vermont, and keep in mind at the national level, there are other priorities. So that's one, one point of my response. The second point of my response is, as we're working to implement Perkins V, it requires a local needs assessment with each center, which would look at, are those programs aligned with the labor market needs? And then the curriculum would need to be updated. So those are part of our strategies.
Okay. In the top 20 job openings in Vermont, only one of them, which has to do with North Sea and healthcare, really requires a lot of different kinds of people. And the unemployment rate is low, but it's kinda tricky, and I don't understand it.
Well, as I understand.
We need jobs.
Yes, as I understand the unemployment rate, there are people that have stopped, so they publish, I think it's 2.3% unemployment rate. But there's another statistic that's people who have stopped looking for jobs or who aren't getting unemployment anymore, that's a bigger group. We still have a demographic issue in the state. There aren't enough people to fill the jobs. And as you saw from the participation rates, only 30% of our high school students are going into technical education. I didn't break down the programs, but cosmetology is there, automotive is there, building trades is there. Are those the right programs that we should be offering for the state? Is that my decision to make? Is that the agency's decision to make? I think it's a local community decision. Where do, I, I wanna know where the students who participate in cosmetology go? What, where do those students end up? Where do those students in automotive go? Are they all automotive technicians? Are they going on to engineering? Are they going into manufacturing? And I think this is the, the push and the pull of the role of technical education in Vermont. Is it to get students to graduate high school and go on and be successful in whatever they wanna do? Or is it to be aligned with a specific job or a specific career? Is it both? I think it's both. So, so these are the, the things that keep me up at night.
The classic economic thing would be saying, if we're oversupplying cosmetologists, then we're driving down wages.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, John?
Well, first, I'd like to applaud you for doing this work. I think it's just always valuable to bring together all of your people and the different stakeholders and just think with a blank piece of paper, as you've done. Good stuff comes from that at, at all levels, so I think that's really valuable. I'm not qualified to judge the merits of what you've written, but I certainly applaud your process. I wanted to ask you to ask some questions that may not serve your agenda at all, but serve mine.
Okay. Is it within our agenda?
It happens to be.
Okay, all right.
You may have been here when we were talking about equity, excellence, and, and efficiency. And a rather bizarre idea emerged, which was to kinda map onto the technical centers structure that we already have, the regional structure, to map onto it something in addition to the original vision for technical centers, which was, or would be, to map onto it other learning opportunities. AP courses was an example. The notion being that a real challenge in equity is that what's available to you to study depends a great deal on what town you're in, what school you go to. And so some high schools offer very rich programs and others offer very inadequate programs. My guess is that that's kinda like career and technical education used to be in Vermont 50 years ago, that there were some communities that had.
Yes.
Those programs and others that didn't. And so this kinda regionalized notion emerged to make it available to the whole watershed in a region. So we're sort of seeing in a way a car, kinda corresponding gap with regard to general education, basic education or advanced education, that if you go to Rochester High School, the, what's on offer is so, just a fraction of what's offered at Rutland High School. So the thought emerged kind of randomly here that what would happen if you use the CTE network as a place to map onto it some other stuff?
Mm-hmm.
That it became. That it became kind of the, the hub of a spoken hub educational system, not just about technical and career, but about other stuff too?
Sure.
Is that imaginable?
During our advisory meeting in Burlington, the idea of rebranding the centers as career, technical, and advanced education centers came up. When we talk about these things, I always wonder about capacity.
Sure.
Of the centers to, to be able to manage this. We're talking about career guidance as a, maybe a service that the technical centers offer high schools, do they have the capacity for that? I think that's a concern of the administrators. I, I know that in other states, that model exists. In Kentucky, there are a few examples of early college technical centers. And so that concept of some advanced education being offered on the same campus as technical education, the partnership, the hand-in-hand, is out there. What would it look like for Vermont? I'm not sure. I would also flip it over and say, are there things that high schools can offer that the technical centers currently offer that maybe would be more successful in a high school? That's part of the Career Pathways work, identifying what's the sequence of instruction that needs to happen in seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th grade to get a student ready for some capstone experience in the technical center. The technical centers were created, wherever this document is, because they were equipment and resource-heavy programs. And in the day, when computers were expensive, the technical centers had business programs, computing programs, but now we see high schools around the state have computer labs. And so what, what role, you know, kind of philosophical question, what role do computers play in technical education for IT, computer programming, business? Do those need to be housed in technical centers? Could they be housed somewhere else? Can it be part of a pathway leading to something? That this is all part of the discussion?
So would you envision what John's saying in the ones you laid out, the fourth one, where it says supporting collaboration among systems and promoting coordination? Would that fall underneath that goal?
Yeah.
So is this, what we're talking about here, is that matching with some of these visions?
Yes, and, and I talked about the comments. So people said in the comments, it would really be nice to have technical education offered in my high school. The solution, well, part of the problem, is related to how we pay for it. And if it's, the technical centers are the delivery model, and high schools are offering programs from their own budgets, it's pulling students away. So it's this, if a big high school offers a program that looks like technical education, those students are not going to go to the center, and so that center cannot afford to offer the program to the rest of the region. And so it's this, the dynamics are at play in, in the regions that I think we're pushing forward on helping the community solve these sticky problems. Who should offer this program? Does it make sense to offer to the high school? Can it be delivered online? Is there some other use of technology that we can employ to help reach as many students as possible? So I, I think what you're talking about is part of the conversation, and why the strategies, I'm saying are, are draft form, because I'm, I'm rolling the, the car out of the garage now for, for everyone to look at and provide additional comments on what, what makes the most sense.
How many tech centers are comprehensive in that they have the, are located in the high school and can make this joint?
Every technical center, with the exception of Cold Hollow in Ennisburg, is attached to the largest high school in the region. Mississauga Valley Union High School is one of what I would say is a comprehensive high school. They offer agriculture programs, so we recognize those. St. Johnsbury Academy and Lyndon Institute are really a comprehensive high school model. They, in the state board rules, are designated as the technical center for that region. So students have the ability to move in and out of academic courses into technical courses. But everyone else is its own entity hosted by the, the attached high school board.
So I guess this is clarification from the secretary, because you had originally said that you weren't going to have CTE goals separate from state goals. So I guess what has changed, and, because that's a different direction than you told us earlier that we, you were considering? So if you could just speak to that, why we're now moving forward with the CTE goals?
I think the, you know, an arrival, you know, one of the things I was struggling with is how to make coherence out of some pretty complex policy spaces. And this is arguably one of the most complex areas. I would say the other one we have is early education. But as I became more aware of what the work was, I just saw this as a vehicle that could really help advance the policy conversation. As we, kind of Jay touched on, there's already been additional initiatives to this session. So I think it's really important that we, the AOE in particular, with its expertise, provides some leadership on this, and at this moment in time, start to advance that, particularly as we're starting to write out Perkins Five.
Okay, so.
It's a timing question now.
Okay, so it's the timing, so instead of it being part of a whole state.
Yeah, I think this is really useful.
Conversation, we're separating it out.
Yeah.
Other questions by the board?
Yeah.
Bill?
Which of these are actionable statements?
I think that the supporting only high-quality programs is an actionable statement, because as part of Perkins, we need to review programs for quality. I think engaging industry as a full partner is actionable as we implement Career Pathways, and are engaging industry directly from the Agency of Education. At the local level, it's actionable, the centers are already doing that. I think implementing the career advisement system is actionable, but it will take time. We would be asking high schools and middle schools to interact with the technical center in a way that maybe they haven't before. Collaboration among systems and coordination between systems is actionable. We've hosted four regional conversations about PLP alignment. We're going to be hosting some more in the next school year. So we're already working on these, it's just, it's not a, we're going to arrive at a destination in the next six months to a year, it will be a process. I think we're already working on, on many of these things.
John?
So this is a question about curriculum. Sometimes, some of us wonder why we need 60 different curriculum coordinators all around the state to design curricula for their schools. We wonder, is it 60 times better than having one? We kind of doubt it. How coordinated are the curricula among the career technical education centers? And if they're not all in lockstep, which I infer they're not, what percentage of, of them is core, and what percentage is differential?
I think that one is a hard one to answer. I, I will say, I'll speak about a willingness for there to be consistency.
Okay.
So, eight years ago, when I started at the agency, the centers were doing their own thing, and they have done their own thing for a while. As long as they were teaching to the standards and the core competencies that we had identified, fine. But in my work, as I started meeting with teachers, they would say, this is crazy, why do we do it this way? Why can't we all teach the same thing? Why can't we all use the same assessments? Okay? So we're starting to have this environment, and eight years later, we're, we're at a place where the administrators of the technical centers are willing to partner with us to design career pathways and to identify the curriculum. In a couple of weeks, we're going to have manufacturing employers at the agency, meeting with administrators, to select the curriculum that we're going to use for advanced manufacturing. And so, same thing in the cybersecurity program of study area. We're going to be using the same curriculum, we will be using the same assessments that are industry-recognized credentials. And so there's a, this willingness to partner and move along in the selection of curriculum that applies across the state.
I think, yeah, what John's talking about too, so I'm just thinking of the Connecticut model, where there's one district for all CTEs, and has that been discussed at all? Because in sense, we have that now, because if you are in part of a local CTE, and they don't offer the program that you want, you can go to another CTE. So has that been part of the conversation at all, about when it, governance and CTE, and aligning curriculum, and streamlining, and becoming more efficient?
I would say that the technical center directors are interested in talking about that. They, they have an opportunity now to propose some new governance model. As I have talked to colleagues from Connecticut, they identify some concerns with that model. But I, I think there's maybe a different way that the system could operate, and I think the legislature in passing Act 189 and identifying these pilots was saying, we want, we, we would like there to be a different model too, we just don't know what it is. So, we have three different governance models in the system now. Independent tech center districts, there are three of those, Middlebury, Bennington, Springfield. Private schools serving as the technical centers of the region, St. Johnsbury Academy and Lyndon Institute, and everybody else.
And I know one last question I have for the first one. It talks about supporting only high-quality rigorous aligned CTE pathway programs, but what about programs that will pay livable wages? One thing I do worry about is, do we set students up for a life of poverty if we're training them in careers that will not give them a livable wage? And we're investing money in training them.
Yep.
For something they're not getting a livable wage. And as a state, we're going to be supplementing their income.
Yep.
Through, through public programs. And so are we setting them up for, and that's?
I think it's a valid question, and I, I think as we're working to implement Perkins Five, and we want to implement more comprehensive program reviews, and have centers kind of evaluate, self-evaluate their programs, we want to include data like that as part of the process. And these are tough conversations at the school level, because it's someone's job, and the program fills a role within the school system, whether it's putting students on a trajectory to a high-paying job or not. The way the funding system works is, if, if, I'll say, legacy programs, if there are legacy programs that are always a draw to students, that is a way to, for the center to have a stream of funding that they can count on. And I think until the funding, until the end of this pilot phase, where we have a center that's looking at a different funding model, we might see the same results.
So they're incentivized to provide programs that students want, but not necessarily need?
Yeah, and, and you can flip that on its head and say, maybe we could do a better job of attracting students to programs that do lead to jobs that are high-wage. But, you know, it's, it's a struggle, I think, with peer influence and expectations of family members about what, what to do.
Kim?
And maybe there's an opportunity to build expectations and interests at younger ages in areas where we see those opportunities, and morph gradually from those more popular programs to those that kind of align with careers that are in that domain, but offer livable wages. So, you know, a softer landing, or more palatable way to keep the interest and upgrade it, if you will, to what makes sense today. And I just, because I'm new and can ask, I am assuming the funding resolution is outside of the scope of these conversations for now? The, the funding challenges.
Yes.
That create the push and pull between the K-12 and Tech Ed. And, and again, because I'm, can ask, where is that in, is, is anything happening around that, which seems to be sort of the crux of some of the biggest challenges?
Sure. It's a great question. Do you get one meeting to ask those questions, or?
I don't know, I'm just going to keep working.
I think you can work the first six months.
I'm going to work that as long as they let me.
It's two years.
As long as Jenna and I are new, we can, for two years, I think, right?
Yeah, John's been saying that, it's like, as a newbie, you can't pay that anymore.
You can't now, that.
Exactly.
We're the new newbie.
It's a great question, and I, I think we made a conscious decision to not include funding and governance in, in this vision process. It's a thing that everyone, it's a problem that everyone likes to admire, but no one really has proposed any solution that would work. And to your point about earlier access, getting students along the way, I think career guidance starting in grade seven, when the personalized learning plan process starts, will help. Having programs available, or curriculum alignment, so that middle schools are aligning with what the technical centers are doing, will help. The pilots, which are intended to specifically study governance and funding issues, whatever this, a center proposes, is a process that will last two years. So sometime in 2021, we will have the final report from the pilot sites that have been selected. Again, we have one that's been selected now, and we extended the deadline. It's complicated to, because it's a lot of additional work on the administrators, and I think there's a hesitation in communities because of Act 46 to try to talk about this other thing, this other type of funding, this other type of governance for the technical centers. That's why we got one proposal so far.
Bill?
What's the president's proposal for Tech Ed? I know that we're heavily dependent upon federal monies in this area, and what do we see?
Well, the president and Ivanka spearheaded getting Perkins through Congress. And so I, I think in that, you could read something in the tea leaves about what, where he wants to go with it. There has been a lot of focus on apprenticeships, creating a different type of apprenticeship, industry-recognized apprenticeship, instead of registered apprenticeship, and a focus on pre-apprenticeships. So I believe his focus is in this area, I can't speak for him, but I, I think workforce development and technical education are a priority for the administration, just given everything that I've heard and seen.
I just heard ASO is targeted minus 12%.
I think in Perkins, there is a plan to increase funding. Last year, we got an increase for the first time since 1998. So we got $500,000 more dollars, and I think the Perkins Law is proposing additional increases. There's a campaign to double the investment in CTE at the national level.
All right, so John, last question?
Recently had the privilege of taking a granddaughter to look at colleges, Boston area. Came away learning, what do I know, that Northeastern is a really hot place.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't always be that way. So it seems like what you're doing is kind of very opportune, this, this sort of a convergence of forces that makes career and technical education especially prized. So that leads me, I'm wondering, why are your enrollments kind of flat? Percentages are up, but that's really because the total population's declining. What, what's holding back? I would have expected to see a Northeastern effect here, and why isn't it happening?
Well, I think there are a number of factors. We have a lot of small schools, and if students are going out on dual enrollment, or they're going out for work-based learning, and they're going out for career technical education, who's left in the building? I think that's part of the, the thinking. I think.
That's thinking by the administrators of small schools?
By the technical center directors, who hear it from the principals of these small schools.
Again, this is the incentive, so it's the incentive for schools to hold on to students and offer programs in their local school opposed to having them sent to the tech center because. because of the money and the push and the pull. So if you create a program at your school and you retain five students, that's the incentive for the schools, which then could adversely affect.
So.
So in both ways, you can see it both ways.
That's one driver. Implementation of PLPs and students who might have gone to the technical center before but who are on a work-based learning experience might say, well, I don't need to go to the center because I'm in this work-based learning experience. I think it's a confluence of things. The directors of the centers, I think, would like to see every student in the state participate in CTE in some way. And I think the way that we have collected data and the way that we define CTE is this is what happens in the technical centers. So we don't collect data on business programs in high schools or IT programs in high schools. So what I presented earlier is just, these are the students that are in the technical centers.
All right, well, thank you. And so, and the reason there is no vote is usually, and it's for new members, we introduce something and then a month later, get to vote on it. So that way, if you have follow-up questions, you can get that answered. And if we could get that document that has, even if it's a working document, I think it gives more clarity, because it was nice to see that up there, I just couldn't read through it.
Yep.
But that would be great, and we will have this voted on for next meeting and whether or not to take that. So thank you, Jay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
When they come back, I'd like to see what practical changes will result from this plan. What changes on the ground for kids and programs?
I think that will come out in that list, too, some of those strategies. All right, thank you. So our last meeting, we talked about post-secondary. And now we had now to three, three schools that are closing, post-secondary. And Dan had said he would come back. And I think, we don't need much time for this, but just to give us an update on where we are with that conversation. We had talked about convening people, and you said that you want to really take the lead and reach out to different partners. And when data becomes available, letting us know what data there is. So where do we stand right now with that post-secondary discussion?
Yeah, three things I can sort of update on you, give you an update. One is, yeah, I'm still working on convening some sort of event. As I mentioned, I had, as part of my blueprint activity, had convened a meeting already with some higher ed folks. So I thought it would be a good follow-up activity for that, and possibly including the Business Roundtable and that. And they've expressed interest in this topic, so I haven't put that together yet. And secondly, you express some interest in pulling data on the colleges in our state, something we're still working on. It's not a dataset we have inside the agency. So I essentially have to go out to their websites and put that together. But it's going to be hard for us to finish that up until after the legislative session is over. It's just not a priority. Lastly, just to give you sort of an update on where the whole conversation is around the school closures and records and so forth. And Emily, if you want to, Emily can help with this a little bit. But there was, there's been some conversation recently around funding this. The state college system has expressed some interest in it. And maybe you can fill in some of that.
And update on two fronts. The first front is the legislation, I think it's relevant to talk about it now, if it's okay. There, as you know, is legislation to revise Section 175 and Title 16. And the most recent question put to the agency was whether we would favor changing the responsibility in that statute to the agency rather than the state board. I understood, Krista, that you testified about that while I was quickly out of the room one afternoon. You know, the secretary had been considering it. But it looks like that change probably will be proposed, so we'll keep you updated.
And just to clarify, because right now, our responsibility is for schools to come in and tell us where their records are going to go. So it's very much record-keeping, not policymaking. And so that, the board had talked about how that would be much better transferred back to the agency. So they could have that, it's very much come in and talk to us and tell you where the records are going to go. Takes a lot of time and it'd just be better responsive at the agency who's there every day.
While current law stands, it is still your responsibility. So I wanted to update you specifically about two colleges that have announced closure that I am working with to make sure that they reach agreement with a partner who will take custody of their records. So the two colleges are Southern Vermont College and the College of St. Joseph. It would be premature to make public which institution they're working to agree with, because those agreements have not been finalized. But I am encouraged by the progress, and both institutions have been keeping me apprised of their progress. And I expect that both will be ready for the May agenda to present their agreement for your approval, assuming that it will still be current law that you approved as.
Probably by then it's, it'll still, but could you update us also? So I know that in the legislature, they're talking about giving money attached to having one organization take in all records, including the records that you have.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yes, so, I mean, that's, is that something that is moving? I know I've been asked about it, and the idea that there would be one central area that any school records, as they're closing, would go in Vermont, and it would come with dollars.
Yeah, I mean, my two cents on that is this is really two issues. One is Burlington College, and then the question of everyone else.
Right.
And in terms of Burlington College, you know, we have those records at the agency. We certainly would like to put them someplace else that's with adequate storage and so forth, because we're really not equipped to do that. So that's been part of the topic. But in terms of the long term, I don't think, from our perspective, that's not really necessary. I think as long as we can, you know, make sure AVIC is doing their piece and that we can proactively stay out in front of it.
Can you say what AVIC is, just for?
Well.
Association of Vermont Independent Colleges.
Yeah, so they're basically, I'll characterize them as a self-insured risk pool. So when the private colleges go out of business, these folks sort of exist to help with that transition. But there was a process by which they were kicking people out of the risk pool when they were deemed likely to close. So we're trying to, that's probably going to be closed, I think, that loophole. So that'll function better. And then, you know, really, so from my perspective, we're just left with the issue of what to do with Burlington College, but I'm not sure where the funding piece will go.
How long is the retention policy? So I graduate from college, how long is somebody required to hold those records for?
That's a great question. With school records, it's indefinite. You know, we keep a transcript. But the Secretary of State's office sort of defines those record retention policies, which is another point of interest. But, yeah, so I don't know where the money piece is going, but it wasn't something we were necessarily that excited about.
Okay. I was just thinking.
Yeah, state college system was offering to take it on.
For money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And those conversations are ongoing.
Yeah, so who knows where it'll go, but.
Any questions or comments?
Has there been any discussion about, that you know about schools merging? Any more school merger? I mean, we talked about the three colleges in my area that closed. And you look at the overhead, and I think we talked about the staffing levels at Southern Vermont College that were reported in the newspaper. I don't know if they were accurate or not, but it just seems like in these smaller schools that have less than 1,000 students, you're paying a president, facilities guy, a registrar, a bursar. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Have there been any more discussions at other levels about possibly merging?
Yeah, we're not privy to those necessarily, but I think it is, you know, President Allen, when he was here from Green Mountain College, made that point that, you know, he thought, in his experience, that they could have remained open if they had been able to find a partner. And his perspective was the trustees of the institution that were more resistant than necessarily the executives of these colleges to do that kind of thing, so.
That one just seems weird, because it's almost a triangulation of the three universities, or the three colleges that closed. And it just seems like they were, they all suffered from probably the same problems.
There was some other really good testimony, again, from the January meeting when Green Mountain College came. And I think we're very honest about their experience and the challenges they were going through and the debt. So that's another, January, January meeting was a good meeting. Just to go back and watch this. I know, so you missed a lot. No, it was, we had some really interesting witnesses that came forward.
For the new board members, I mean, we don't, the agency doesn't have a lot of oversight of the higher education system. You know, the state college system in particular has its own structure. And then we're talking largely about independent schools. And there's this nominal sort of oversight we have on the records and so forth. But for the most part, we're not privy to any kind of conversation.
And I know at the legislature, they're considering whether or not to ask us to then come up with a plan for these schools. So they're going through, but right now, the last thing I saw, they're doing, they are proposing a lit review. That was the last thing I saw on the website, that there would be a 40, for the last 40 years, of a literature review of independent schools and closure. And the committee itself is not the state board. It was made up of appointees from the governor, speaker, and the House, or in the Senate. So that was.
Sounds like a lot of reading.
It does. Forty years. Forty years' worth of research for small independent colleges in doing a lit review. That's what I said, I've never, I've seen a study committee, I've never seen a lit review proposed.
There was, I think, a lit review in CTE.
Was there, okay.
Are they still here?
It does seem like the one common thread here, from what I can gather, not just here, but also in other locations, is size. You don't hear about the 25,000 student university that closes. They all tend to be very small institutions.
So that's, I mean, they're working on it, and we might get an assignment this summer. We might not, so we don't know until they're done. But something to keep aware of. All right, so, thank you. Next one is the draft 173 rules. And I see that we have some members to come and help us. So if you want to step front. Oh, is anybody driving a blue car with Building Bright Futures bumper sticker on the plates? So they have their lights on? Blue car, Building Bright Futures, no? Okay, all right, thank you. Never know what you get for notes. So, if you, welcome, thank you for coming back again. And if you want to just introduce yourself for the record, that's great.
My name is Judy Cutler. I am a part of the legal team at the Agency of Education and also the lead of the 173 rulemaking team.
And I'm Chris Case, I'm the director of the Student Support Services Division.
And you are here to help guide us through one of the largest packets that we received. And so if you want to just maybe take us through where we're at with these rules and what you're looking for us to do, and what the agency's perspective on what should happen. We heard earlier in public comment about the advisory committee voting to ask that this be delayed. So just trying to get the agency's perspective on where we're at.
Sure, so the first thing I'm going to do is add to your packet, because as I was reviewing the, so what I sent the board members was a simplified view of the edits that we've made. And I realized that one of the critical sections, Rule 2366, which is the funding rule, just shows that it's been deleted and that's it. So I have an annotated version of those deletions. I don't know to what extent we'll get into that conversation this meeting, but certainly for future meetings, you'll want to see that. So I'm going to just pass that around. So I'd like to start by kind of grounding the conversation from the agency's point of view and the work that we've done to date. And then we can have a discussion afterwards, wherever that needs to go. So as you probably are all familiar with Act 173, there are some really broad goals of the act. And generally, those goals are to enhance the effectiveness of services, availability of services, and the equity of services provided to students who require additional support. In doing our work particularly on the rules, we've tried to define the purpose of the act for our own work. And I apologize for reading, I wasn't sure how the projection was going to go in this room. We've encountered difficulties before. But if you bear with me, I'll read you the agency's working definition of purpose that we've kind of done our work around. So the purpose of Act 173 is to support all students who struggle, including students who qualify for an IEP under IDEA. Act 173 preserves the entitlement created by IDEA and redesigns the Vermont Special Education Funding System to support a system of best practices in the general education classroom and intervention as needed over the course of a student's educational experience. So I think what the rulemaking team has tried to do is recognize that our work is only part of this act and only part of the success of this act. So I'd like to identify some of the goals that we had as a group and also some of the, what we've identified as the overarching goals of the implementation as a whole of the work required. So the rulemaking goals that we've attempted to address in the work that you received are to first establish the requirements necessary to effectuate the mechanics of the funding shift from reimbursement to census-based model. This is the actual way that we give schools money. It's like, it's like physical as opposed to, I guess, philosophical. So we've tried to create requirements for the mechanics of that shift. In addition, we've tried to respond to direct rulemaking requirements in Act 173. You know, within the act, we're required to define allowable special education expenditures, for example. So we've tried to respond to direct requirements within the act. And we've also tried to identify the permissive use of special education funding consistent with state and federal requirements. Part of the tension within this act is that the money that's been identified for use for all students who struggle is special education money. And there are a number of very restrictive rules around the use of that money so that people only use it for special education, school districts, the state, et cetera. So finding spots, windows of flexibility, we've tried to identify those and point them out in these rules. What we see as more sort of global implementation goals that might not necessarily be accomplished through the rules on their own are systematic changes that enhance service delivery and promote meaningful changes in practice. And we had a roundtable discussion with some practitioners, and they talked a lot about the necessity for a cultural shift and a shift in the way of thinking about all students as opposed to special education students and all other students. And kind of the idea that these are all our students, this is a community effort, this is a community initiative. That's something that will be difficult to accomplish through a body of administrative rules. You know, I mean, I don't want to sell ourselves short, but I'm just trying to be realistic. So the other more global implementation goal is to provide technical assistance and professional learning to support supervisory unions in school districts in the implementation of this act. And that is something that the agency is also working hard on. And I imagine at some point, the board will be hearing about that work as well. To the, one of the goals, I think, that has been, that has been emphasized about Act 173 is the potential increase in funding flexibility. And the agency sees that being accomplished along with practice and system design change. You know, within the rules, we can't just say you can spend this money how you want to spend this money. There are restrictions on it that continue to exist despite, despite the legislation. And then finally, one of the goals of the act is to decrease administrative burden in their, in reporting requirements, particularly for supervisory unions and school districts in reporting their spending, their special education spending. So sort of that, the two dynamics. What we've tried to accomplish with rulemaking and what we see as a greater, as a greater effort that has more work to bear upon it than just the rules. So just to give you an idea of the timeline that we're looking at, I understand that that is a big issue, and I'm interested to hear what the board has to say about it. I know that Secretary French has articulated the agency's position on it. But it. French has articulated the agency's position on it, but, but it hasn't changed our work, and it hasn't changed what we've tried to accomplish. And so the milestones that we're going to continue to try to make until told otherwise. Today, we're presenting you with a draft of the rules. We anticipate possibly in May, the, the board possibly voting on that. This is, this is what we're working with. After the board votes, we would present those to ICAR, which is the Interagency Committee on Administrative Rules, which is just part of the, the administrative process. Hopefully, in, in June, ICAR would approve the rules, and then we would start the public comment period, and that would extend from June through August, at which point we would then again start moving through the procedural gates, present final rules to the state board, present the rules to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, and then ultimately to the, the Secretary of State's office, hopefully for November 1, 2019, adoption date. That's the, that's what we're working with.
And so that would be, just to put in context, everything for, on our end would have to be done by our October meeting?
That's, that's right.
To meet the November 1st? So it's that October, so, okay.
Yep. So, understanding that that timeline is, there's a potential for that to change,
Because right now, that timeline is not set by the agency, it's set by the legislation itself.
That's right. It is. So, just kind of to give the board an idea of the, the approach that we've taken to the actual work, the first thing I'd like to share is that we, as the rulemaking team and the 173 team, have tried our best to keep these rules to a narrow scope. In other words, what is necessary to implement Act 173, which is what the act directs, rulemaking necessary to implement Act 173. We recognize that there are a number of substantive special education programmatic rules, that there is a desire, there's an internal desire and external desire from a number of stakeholders to address in a substantive way, programmatic rules. I can talk more about that if there's any interest on particular rules, but I won't go into that right now. But it's the agency's position, and it has been from the beginning, that addressing those rules, while may be important, while may be appropriate at some point, is not necessary to implement the act. That has been a difficult position to take in some cases. The second approach that we've taken is, we've tried to keep the rule language broad, and we've done that for a number of reasons. First, some of them, I suppose, more substantive that don't deal with the mechanics of the funding, the more substantive rules that we've developed are around monitoring and reporting, both fiscal monitoring for supervisory unions in school districts and programmatic monitoring. If you've had a chance to look at those rules, you'll see that the language is fairly broad, and that we don't have many details about specifically what the agency will be looking at in those monitoring processes. And those are, the reason for that is, first, you know, this, the, Act 173 has a five-year implementation period. It's hard to predict anything that's going to happen in the next five years, and we want to be able to have the flexibility to adjust policies and procedures based on issues that come up during implementation, so that that won't necessitate every time something comes up for, for us to go through the rulemaking process. Now, there's, it, it's, do you-
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
And jump in if anyone has questions on any point, I don't mind interruptions. But that's, it's, it's a fine line that we've tried to achieve. The other reason for keeping the rule language broad is because within the agency, we are doing a lot of work aligning our internal systems. So we're trying, as a way of reducing administrative burden, as a way of recognizing some additional efficiencies. You know, we have federal funding requirements, we have state funding requirements, we have programmatic monitoring, and we're trying to pull those all together and into a more cohesive system, so that these aren't painful administrative processes for supervisory unions and school districts. And so, but that is taking work. They're, you know, these are cross-agency initiatives that require time to design.
So can I just interrupt-
Yes.
With the secretary, are you still, are you advocating for more time, or are you still, or are you staying out of the time conversation when it comes to the legislature? I know the advisory group has already put forward that it should be postponed here, and so what, what is the position of the agency with rulemaking and time?
Yeah, well, I was with you up to the rulemaking piece, but the time piece, we, I think you received yesterday from us, we testified, I testified on Friday advocating for a delay. So we tried to get that out to you in advance of this meeting. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, that's our position.
And so what do you need from the board, besides not voting out the rules?
Well, I, when I say delay, I think this is, you know, and I can definitely, I think that's a good document, so I'm disappointed that we didn't get it to you in time, but I wasn't trying to stay out of it. My position all along was, I wanted firstly to see a draft of the rules, and to make an assessment, and, and have some internal conversation in the agency. The people have been really attached to work to get their best thinking on it, and that all coincided with me needing to testify on Friday afternoon. So, that's why the lateness of it, but I wasn't trying to stay away from it. I just, I, people, different groups have been very interested in delaying this before, in my view, while the information was on the table. And I would argue, there's lots of different reasons why people are advocating for delay. One of the reasons also is that now there's more clarity about what's involved. People are now more interested in seeing it delayed, and possibly, you know, not interested in seeing it implemented. But, I think it's fair to say, you know, our analysis indicates there's, there's a couple reasons why I think a delay is prudent. One is, you know, we've struggled on the professional development side, so there's two components to the law, as I see it. There's the change in the finance system, and there's the change in the practice. And our, our inability to, well, we've struggled, as Judy was just describing, to get some coherence on the, on the professional development support, has been challenging, because we've found a number of vacancies in that very section of the agency that would design those things. At the same time, those things have been, we've been filling vacancies, and we're making progress there. But the other point I make on that argument, and this, you know, I should say firstly, this was not an easy decision to make, so I had to, we had to really do stick in it.
No, I didn't even think about this, yeah.
Yeah. The other piece of it is that many of these sort of changes in practice that we talk about, in particular MTSS, multi-tier support system, this idea of dealing with all kinds of kids prior to further special ed, these are initiatives that have been in place well before 173. So, really, what we're talking about is not so much a magic bullet in terms of professional development, it's just, once again, the fact that, as you learn through Act 46, we have districts that tomorrow could implement 173 no problem. We have other districts that still haven't implemented Act 153, you know? So, when we design these policies and advocate for a delay or not, you know, around, particularly around the professional development practice, it really requires sort of a, sort of an inventory of what the capacity is of people to do this, and it's all over the ice. So-
So, where are you with filling the, because I know this is where the agency, or, sorry, the legislature gave you three one-year positions?
That's correct. Well, not one-year positions, or, well, they were, yeah, they were funded on a contingent basis, yeah.
They were funded for one year. So, but where are you with, like, you just said that you're-
Yeah, the legal, not to get a long-winded explanation of it, so we have two, I'll call program positions, and one legal position. Legal position, the decision before I arrived as secretary was made essentially to continue the employment of an individual, Emily Simmons, who was, the funding for her position was expiring, and to then also contract out for specific expert, legal expertise on special education. So that, that was accomplished, and it's working great. It's one of the reasons why we're able to produce the rules for you. That part of our capacity is fine, the legal end of support, in my view, is great. Where we've been shorter is on the program side, and that's where the other two positions were assigned. The challenge with that, when I had arrived, that one round of recruitment, no, it hadn't started yet, because what happened, the division director, the assistant division director, and the state director of special education, three major leadership positions in that division all retired. So the focus was on getting the leadership positions in place, and when I had arrived, one round of recruitment on the division director had just ended unsuccessfully. So, that's been an issue. Chris is the new division director, and our assistant division director in the background. So we've been able, and we have a state director of special education starting shortly. So, we've been able to make a lot of progress on getting our core leadership of the division in place. We've had yet another round of unsuccessful recruitment in these two program positions. So we're about to, where are we today, launching that again, or?
We have one position that we have a candidate for, but we're still exploring-
Yeah.
Whether that's going to work out, and the other position we're going to have to repost.
Yeah.
And the other position is tied to special education. I think we're having challenges with recruiting in that area.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's really, I mean, I, I do appreciate the argument that these two saviors are out there somehow that are going to help do this, but it's a challenge, and I'm not convinced that even if we could find these people with the expertise that seems to be necessary to do this, that we'd be any further than we are now, because we still have districts in the state that haven't done the old laws, a little on the new laws. So, but anyway, we've been making progress in terms of that. But I think it's a fair criticism of where we're at, is that we need, and I think Judy alluded to, there's a lot of complexity here, we're trying to pull together, even if we had the positions, but I think we'd still struggle with how to align school improvement initiatives with Act 173, because it's, it's really designed to be a comprehensive initiative. So, that's, that's a fair, fair judgment on delay. But I think, you know, what I landed in my testimony was that also, you know, there's two major studies in 173, one from UVM on the funding, and one from the DMG group on practice, and that's what makes 173 a very, I think, useful policy framework. The logic is that a change in funding is actually necessary in order to get the change in practice. You know, the assumption, the analysis is that our current funding system is actually, has the wrong incentives in place to get the change in practice. So, there's, there's, the two are connected very tightly, and part of what I had to respond to was, one argument was that we shouldn't do anything like on the rules or on the funding piece until we absolutely are fully saturated with PD and we know what we're, you know. I don't think that's appropriate. Actually, we will not get the change in practice unless we embark on a, on a, the process to change the funding formula. So where, a piece of that, that I think we still have to struggle through, and this gets me to your question about delay and rules or not, because I think as much as we're advocating for delay, I think it's a point of conversation still about what is, what does a delay look like? Okay? So what I've argued, or suggested as a delay is not necessarily what others who are in support of delay are advocating for. So there's a disagreement a bit about what does the delay actually look like. From my perspective, the rules should go forward, you know, because this will start a public conversation around what the rules should be, and that's, that's totally appropriate. I don't know how long that would last if we get more time from the legislature to do it, but I think it's, they're ready to go. It's a, it's a high-quality product that I stand behind. It's not a product that's been diminished by AOE capacity. If anything, I'd say it represents some of our best thinking, and it's, people, some people don't like the ideas, so they're pushing back against it, but I think they're ready to go into the public sphere for that, for total reaction, and that's great. But I think, you know, the, the pieces that we have to get into a little bit, as you heard earlier in the public comment, you know, this, this promise of flexibility that was presented as, as part of the initiative, that's true, but it also always with the caveat that we still have to follow federal law, you know? So that, that piece, we have some work to do, I think, on behalf of the field, to really come up with more specificity on what that looks like.
Yeah.
I think the special ed directors would have been against delay if we had been able to produce more specificity on that stuff. But our work rightfully has been focused on the rule framework, but we've had, started to have more internal debate about what, what does maintenance of effort look like and so forth. So, it's a good place to go for us, but I think my, my specific point on delay, and based on our team's analysis, is that we should move forward with the rules. We're advocating for an additional year of life under the reimbursement model. This is what delay means to us, is that you would, we'd still come online in '25, because no matter what, how we cut it, this is probably our most significant policy initiative in front of us, and in terms of achieving outcomes for students, you know, it's really critical. So we don't want to delay it. We want to give people an additional year under the old model of funding to make the transition, but we still want to get there in '25. So, our model looks like an additional year of reimbursement, but then a, a steeper sort of transition in the last couple of years to get there. That's not necessarily what other people are advocating for in the delay. So I think that's where we presented on Friday, I presented on Friday, our best thinking on that. I know there'll be some more conversation, not so much, maybe a little bit this afternoon, but, you know, as the week goes on, but it's a very complex policy initiative, so I'm not sure where they'll end up, you know? That's a long-winded answer, but-
Questions from the board. Yeah, John?
So, then, are you saying that you would advocate that the board stay on track with the rules?
Yes. The rules, regardless of, of the delay or not, the rules are ready to go. I mean, when I say ready to go, they're ready to enter into the public space for deliberation. And that's been a point of interest for us. You know, we have this advisory group that is not a state board, you know? So they provide us advice, and we've been soliciting that advice, but they've also, from my, sometimes, in my view, tried to be the state board as well, in addition to the legislature. So, our point of view has been, we, we were happy to take their input into it. Some people disagree, some disagree with the idea of doing the financial rules separate from the program rules. There's all sorts of subtle points of disagreement there, but I think they're in good shape to launch into that appropriately in your hands, into that public debate, where they can have further input into it, you know? I don't, I don't think it's necessary to hold the whole thing back, because we have other things we have to keep moving on. So we have to work on the program rules, we have a chunk of work on independent schools, you know, so we have things on our schedule. But we're, we're pretty much ready to go with this. It's up to you whether you'd want to pursue.
Would you foresee having all of those come, if, if there was a delay, not just putting this forward, but having the comprehensive, all the rules come through at once? Has that been part of the discussion?
I don't think so yet. I mean, we have, you know, I'll call this a project, so we have project milestones underneath there, and deliverables. I think, depending on what the delay looks, we're going to have to meet and figure out what we're going to attack next. I've got a piece of work on the independent schools that we're working on in-house, that's got to go back to the advisory committee for some initial feedback in May. That also is going to get us into the regular rules on independent schools. So, that, you know, we're going to have to sit back and sort of admire the landscape for a little bit. We've got program rules to do, but we also have to get into sort of the, sort of, I wouldn't call it rules, but the technical guidance that we would give on maintenance of effort, and to what extent you're going to have flexibility or not. So I, some of that's going to be like guidance. It might be useful for us to go there for a bit, but I don't know. We'll, we'll have to take stock of what the actual delay looks like if it's enacted, and then decide on how to proceed.
Now, I know the legislature then will ask the state board, what's our opinion?
Yeah.
So this is where voices from around the table, how do people feel about there's delay, and then there's delay in not taking rules and not voting them out. If we are not going to meet the milestone of November 1st, that would be something we need to communicate to the legislature, that we intend to meet that goal, or we will try to, or we don't feel we have the capacity to do so. That's a board decision. So, I guess I need to hear some board voices on how people feel about proceeding and what's to stop. And again, this is coming in front of us, it'd be next meeting, we would have to vote them out, but knowing that by next meeting, the legislature may be out of session. Potentially, correct? Maybe. Sometimes, you never know. It's like one of those games where you put like, when's the ice going to fall through?
Yeah, I don't have a comment.
You don't know. You can put some, some bets on it, but potentially. So we would need to have some sort of stance as a board on what we want to do with, with the 173 rule series. John?
Well, I'll just blunder into it.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not accustomed to following along with the lead of the secretary, but I think in this case, it, it makes sense that we try to stay on track with the adoption of the rules in front of us, and yet at the same time accommodate and support any legislative move to delay implementation. And that seems to, as I hear the secretary, that that would be a, a combination that would keep things moving forward, but yet at the same time create some flex room later on down the line for the actual rollout of implementation. I mean, I can understand people feel that there are people who don't like the rules the way they exist, but, but the rulemaking process leaves an awful lot of opportunity for people to have input and to shape the rules and to change them. And it feels like holding off on the rulemaking feels to me like a, sort of allowing the perfect- to be the enemy of the good. And it feels like it would be better to just push forward on the rules just to get them out there and get the process kicked into gear and to create a venue in which all kinds of stakeholders can express their views.
Bill?
Which is precisely the process we followed on the 2200 rules.
Oh, really?
And we got a lot of criticism for the way we did that. Put it out there so we can get comments, yes.
Exactly, you're right.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at a very thick document that takes careful review. Any sheet could be an interesting little bomb that nobody ever thought about. And so I asked Dan, what are the vulnerabilities of both going forward and not going forward?
Yeah, I think the not going forward, it sort of, it potentially holds up our ability to then move on to the next section of the work. You know, for us, it's sort of a logic model. We've always envisioned doing this in stages. As Judy said, even before the idea of a delay had been contemplated, we looked at the scope of the work and said, we're going to chop this up into pieces. You know, we're going to do the finance piece, then we're going to do the program piece. The independent school piece was sort of a side, side piece of work. That essential approach has not been met with universal support among all partners.
Okay.
So I think a delay on our end potentially just slows down the full implementation of the law and led some uncertainty as to how we would approach the next phase of the work. On the other hand, if you decide to move forward next month, I think you'll, you'll at least, you'll have time to have read this in more detail between now and next month, but you'll also have possibly some feedback from the general assembly. I mean, my assessment right now, you know, with our opinion, there's a sort of broad consensus that this should be delayed somehow, you know, but I think they're also contemplating delays in lots of, or if not most, the educational policy initiatives right now, including Act 46. So I think they're starting to admire that broader scheme of work and they're wanting to hear from me on how we're going to staff out these various projects. But I, as I said to them on Friday, this is my priority, you know, more so than 46 because I think this is the one that gets us into so many aspects of really bringing the system into alignment for what's best for kids. So it's really the highest leverage activity I think we have in front of us right now.
So can I just ask how, with finances, without the independent school piece, that does seem, I mean, that, without having those two together and how those systems are going to interact, does seem problematic in moving forward? So how do we set...
You mean the program side?
No, so if we have program side...
Independent school?
Independent schools and how they fit in with finance.
Right.
And having that divorced from this, that I just am questioning how we can move forward.
I would say that's how the law is set up, though. It's set up to, the independent schools don't come online for several years after the regular ones.
Right, but it affects the modeling that's going to be used.
Yes, but it's, they're also sort of anticipated to be done differently on a different track. So we're, we're starting that process that was never, my read of the law, it was never intended that we do these things simultaneously because I do, you know, our initial take is that it does get into non-special ed issues pretty quickly with them as well. So we're going to be looking at the non-special ed rules. So it's a bigger, it's a little side project that has to be done in concert to rule your tool 2200 observation, but the law never anticipated them being done simultaneously, you know?
And I guess Bill brought up the 2200 rule series and going out to public comment. So right now in the schedule, it's set for three months and then turning around and creating a whole nother draft responsive to that public comment. And how, correct?
I suppose...
So it'd be June, July, August, that it's public comment, and then turning around and producing another draft set which would have to then be voted out by this board and go to ICAR?
Yes. And I would anticipate that we would be working on the draft along with public comment and having that as an ongoing analysis so that as soon, you know, at the August meeting, we would be ready to present a draft as opposed to there being, you know, any time lapse, but yes.
And I am a little wary of having all public comment over the summer months when people that might have the expertise are away and not be able to meet some of the meetings. And just as a board, are we comfortable with the November 1st deadline? And if I get asked by the legislature, is that, not that we're delaying rulemaking, but is the November 1 timeline a schedule that we think we can deliver if we do decide to vote out next month? Or I'm just, I'm going to be called in. I know the legislature is going to call me in and want to know the opinion, so that's why I want to hear some information about what we're comfortable with. I mean, right now personally, I am not comfortable saying we will get it done by November 1st.
I seriously doubt it.
I mean, I'm, not that it couldn't be done by December or January or February, but that November 1 deadline, I'm very wary of that with the complexity. I mean, this is just looking at this document, the complexity of this document and the public comment, and especially with the advisory committee is so divided, and they're really the experts in the field.
And our, you know, when you question, you were questioning me about the rules, that's where I sort of hesitated because the issue of delay for us has largely been focused on the finance piece and, you know, like what does that mean capacity-wise for the field and for us? The actual mechanics of where the rules, like if you were to advocate for an extension in that rule deadline, that isn't something I had contemplated yet. You know, it's not like to say I wouldn't, but that's really, I think, the state board's role.
Right.
Because that's your work. I'm more or less talking about the larger project, not the specific deliverable deadlines.
Yeah. And again, that's what we're responsible for, so I know that's what they're going to ask. Bill?
When we have regular ed separated from special ed for independent schools, we're just opening up the opportunity over time for these two pieces to be, get out of sync with each other.
We have regular ed separated for special ed for public schools as well. What we're talking about is we need to revisit, and the law requires us to revisit how independent schools are treated for special education funding. What our initial excursion to that conversation indicates is that we're not going to be able to do that absent looking at how they're treated on regular ed as well. So that's what I meant by that.
John?
Just wondering, would a possible sort of middle ground be to have the board decide it would like to proceed with the rulemaking process, but would like to ask the general assembly to push out the termination date of that process so that it goes into December, January, so that, so that there's more opportunity for people, especially not in summer, to be giving us feedback, but that, but that we say we want to get started, but we're willing to accommodate it being, the endpoint being delayed.
So, I mean, that's where I will see, is there consensus around the idea that we are very much dedicated to continuing the rulemaking process? That necessarily doesn't mean we'll vote it out next meeting. It may be a meeting after that, you know, depending, you know, they're not committing to voting it out next meeting, but committing to the rulemaking process and that we're just uncomfortable with the date and would advocate for longer.
I'd be in favor of a little breathing.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't know, I'd rather do things right than do it fast.
Yeah.
And, you know, you are running up against some, you know, summertime, it is hard to get people focused sometimes during that period of time, and then you get into the holiday season and things slow down. So I think maybe pushing it off to the middle of the winter would be okay.
But if the legislature does not comply with our request, then we're, we're bound into a sort of a drop dead date for this, as being November 30. So presumably we would, we would...
But we'd have that answer by the next meeting, right? It's not when the legislature is planning to pack up and leave town.
Which brings up another membrane. Act 46 with a rushed timetable, that was not smart.
No.
It's nothing that we controlled, but the legislature needs to know that you cannot keep doing these things and expect it to have the quality that it deserves.
And I think that even came up earlier in the meeting, we were talking about if you're going to delay a year for small school grants, it's not really a year, it's two years. And just being aware, and that's what I was like, well, budgets are made in October, they're like, oh, oh, okay, so maybe it should be two years. So I think we also have to be good advocates for the field when it comes to these, when legislation's being written, to keep advocating, not that they always listen, and I know that the AOE tries to too, but really being advocates for these needs to be done on thoughtful timetables. And it's, it is pretty aggressive, a lot of these timelines that have been put into law.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, I didn't mean to, go ahead, Bill.
The only thing I'm saying is that, and we also don't have any staff to do this with. I said for the 500th time.
Well, we're happy to take on this rulemaking on our own authority if you would not like to. I mean, that's what your priority, I'm just joking.
I know, you're joking with him, but...
The, I think the, I think 173, I still look at it and say it's probably the most thoughtful piece of legislation we've had in a long time, you know, but it's important and it's very complex. I don't think it's a quick turnaround. I think the board's looking at a quick turnaround on the rulemaking because we're a little bit behind, you know, change in secretary wasn't anticipated. I mean, so there, you know, you're back, you're back off four months or so probably where we would have been, but maybe not. I mean, this has been a complex topic, right? But I think the idea of landing on a new system in fiscal year '25 is a reasonable trajectory to move the system, and we're just never going to move people unless we lay the track down. You know, that's part, it's got to be part of the reality that we talk about, that some people aren't going to move if all the professional development or whatever that model looks like is satisfied. They're still not going to move unless the system incentivizes them to move. And that's, that's why I'm committed to trying to keep it on track as much as I can.
Now, I'm just mindful, we have two people, it's your first meeting, and you're going, what have we gotten ourselves into here? And what are your thoughts, just, you know, for timelines and implementations and what you're comfortable with?
Having no knowledge or experience with the process of rulemaking, honestly, I would most definitely defer to your hesitance to imagine us meeting a November 1 deadline. And I think the thing that resonates with me is getting feedback over the summer months, I think, feels insensitive to those who would be most impacted and very little around education is able to get broad feedback in the summer, I find, at least on the user side of things. So I would be really sensitive to us thinking that was going to be valuable.
Jenna?
Yeah, I would defer to your experience around timelines and what that looks like as well. I certainly do support the energy and effort, I guess, and thoughtfulness around thinking about the implications of practice change and really how transformative this can be for our schools and how that really needs to be kind of thoughtfully envisioned and implemented. And that takes time, for sure.
Now, Callahan, what about you? So you've been through, I think, the most amazing student experience ever. I don't know how you even put that on the resume, that you had one of the toughest jobs in the state of Vermont on a tight timeline created by Act 46 for a deliverable. So any words of wisdom from you going forward and just living through that and your thoughts?
Yeah, I think more time is definitely needed because I felt like with Act 46, like sometimes we met like two or three times a month and like, I know when you have two student members, especially Kyle, I'm sure that's when he's like going through his college probably, that's a, it's like the beginning of the year, that's a tough time. And yeah, I think just, and any advice, like, I don't know, just really listen to testimony, I think, and just, I think if we really wanted to take into account what people were saying and thinking, like, I felt like we were so rushed with Act 46. We were really scrambling, and I felt bad we like cut people off, and it was just a really stressful process. And I think this is just as big, and I think to really just take the time to listen to testimony and make people know that we are listening to them because it's such a big deal. I think just the extra time is, like, I can't even imagine you getting this done by November 1st.
Yeah, so to meet the deadline with 46, we added, I think, six additional meetings throughout that process. So more than, you know, when you sign up and you're like, oh, you get one meeting a month, and all of them came two, and I think one meeting, one month we had three meetings a month. And that was to meet the aggressive timeline that was in legislation because we had no opportunity to change that deadline. And so this is maybe when we want to use our voice a little bit, that we did the work, we proved we can do it with 46, but it came at a cost.
Yeah.
And maybe we don't want to repeat.
Maybe not again, it's okay.
And John, any last thing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would concur with the thoughts around the table. I think moving it out, you know, not working in the business, I didn't even think about the fact that, you know, a lot of the professionals in the field that may want to have say beyond the full-time employees of school districts are probably going to be somewhere else in July, I would hope, rather than at our meetings, providing input. I mean, that's a valuable time for teachers to rest and...
People do come to our meetings in July and August, we found, though.
Yes, they do. Yeah, they do, that's true.
People do come.
That's what you put on the agenda for red meat.
If it's a good topic.
This is just rules, though, so it's not like you're deliberating on secretary's plan for merger, right?
Yeah.
But the public comment, yeah.
The public comment comes in, it doesn't, it is not predicated on them attending a meeting in the summer, you know?
Yeah, yeah, true.
So they're just submitting their feedback, you know?
So they could, they could put those comments together at the beach and then email them in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or I hope they'd be.
Yeah.
So I guess the general consensus is that we're committed to the work, but uneasy about the timeline in which it's currently being assigned to us. Do we need a motion or to...
Well, what are we recommending? What's the day? I really don't want to kick the, you know...
Right now, it's said that we will have...
In the difference to the secretary, too, I don't want to kick the can way down the road either. I want to be able to see the can.
And this is all if ICAR and ICAR accept everything as is. That's the other contingency in this, that we could pass out rules, we could go through, and ICAR could say, nope, go back.
Yes.
Step one, and that gate, and then we would not meet it by any means.
This timeline does not allow for that.
Right, so this timeline, there's no, no deviation from the timeline. It is completely tight. So if ICAR said no, we're done right there. And then if we go through ICAR and go through public comment, but we get to ICAR in the fall and they say, no, go, then that November 1 deadline is not going to be met, period. So then we'd have to go back. So there is an idea of being thoughtfully going through it, so ICAR and ICAR have more, more likely to get through those gates. But, so do people want a motion or just a general agreement?
Could it be a sense of the meeting that we would ask the chair to represent to the general assembly?
I would love a motion.
You know, I'm thinking then that we would pass a resolution or a motion that would ask the chair to inform the general assembly that we're prepared to get going on the rulemaking process. The agency has given us what we need to start with, but we believe that the rulemaking process with the November 30 deadline is too shortened, foreshortened, and that we need that the deadline to be moved to, and you fill in the date, 30th, 28th of February or whatever you all, so I think that's the action that we would, and it's also the sense of the meeting that at our next meeting or the meeting thereafter, we would vote to begin rulemaking as presented to us.
And do we need that in this motion for me to communicate to the legislature that we will begin the process?
I think so. I would think they'd like to know that we intend to get going.
With the intent to take a vote?
At the next meeting or the one thereafter, I heard people talking about both meetings as possible times to vote.
Are people clear on the motion or...
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, you second it? And are people clear on what the motion is? So I have that, to have me communicate with the general assembly that we are prepared to start rulemaking process, but will not meet the November 19 deadline. The one thing I'm unclear about is are we specifying a time or just saying that we don't think we're going to meet the November 1 deadline?
I've heard some of you suggest February, March. What would be the sense of the group as to it? Because I think it's useful to tell them what we would like, lest they come up with something we wouldn't like.
Would we want to say something like up to six months after the original date or up to four months after the original date? So how many more months? I guess that's the way, when you look at it, so if it's November into December, January, February, March would be four months. And so it's, so...
Four months contingent upon the action by the legislature. They may throw a curveball between now and next week. Well, it could change.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is a motion that is asking me to communicate with the general assembly that we are prepared to start rulemaking process at the next meeting or a meeting shortly thereafter, but we are not, we do not expect to meet the November 1 deadline, but would hope to have it done by four months later, which would be March 1st. And do we want to say March 1st because that's not when we have our meeting? Is it by our March state board meeting? Let's just, because then that means February, so...
March meeting of the state board.
The question I have is whether, I thought that I had heard that we weren't necessarily committing to passing it at the next meeting.
It's going.
Right.
So I just didn't know if that was important to the motion or... So I just didn't know if that was important to the motion or, uh, we're committing to a backend time, but I thought that I had heard that we weren't sure whether or not it would pass out of this part of the process, next meeting or the meeting after, like, we weren't necessarily committing to that. And again, I don't know enough about the process. I'm just asking because I'm hearing a disconnect.
Yeah, so that's what I'm hearing from your motion, your motion. And maybe that's where the people can maybe offer a friendly amendment, is that John was, um, talking about making sure we initiate, and that would be committing the board, which is kind of an interesting way of committing the board to a vote that they haven't taken, which is, um, so that is a little uneasy, that we are, are saying that we will vote a certain way, which.
I thought it was intention to consider it.
Right, right.
Didn't say they would vote. Just like you're intending to take it up.
So we intend.
You might not vote for it, but you're at least, put it on your agenda, and you might vote against it or whatever, but at least you can, in good faith, say you've scheduled it, but you can't, yeah, you can't.
Yes, yeah, we can't say how we're going to vote.
Right, right. You can, it'll be on the agenda.
It's ready to go. I mean, if you want to take it up, it's up to you.
Yeah.
And in the course of speaking with the General Assembly, I think so many people have made the point about the, uh, access for educators in the summertime being, uh, being a concern.
And parents.
Yeah.
Do we need to put something in this letter, which is getting longer all the time, about staffing and support?
Well, right now, the agency is committed to staffing this and doing the rules. Um, I don't see, is there any conflict of interest right now with lawyer? Would we need additional access to lawyers at this point?
No, no, I don't think so.
Because that's what we've been mindful of. Anytime there's a conflict of interest, then we have to seek legal counsel in other ways.
No, we're prepared to support you in the work and, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Another trip down memory lane.
Um, all right, so more discussion on this or are people ready to take a vote?
Did we keep in the commitment, how do, how are we framing the commitment to, we're just going to say taking it up again at our next?
Attend, we intend to initiate rulemaking process in the, in the near future, is that what I have? So.
Yeah, I think it's just take it up.
Just take it off.
Take it up.
Take it up.
It'll be on the agenda, we'll take it up. Is that what you're getting at, Kim?
I guess I'm just kidding, because if we say we intend to initiate rulemaking, we are presupposing the outcome of the vote.
Gotcha.
On an item. So I guess we're just committing to taking it up on the agenda in the next meeting or two or whatever.
Yeah.
It's decide however you do it.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and so getting a lot of letter writing in.
Want to make sure you get a copy of the testimony that we, on Friday. It's a good synthesis of the agency's position on this. It's about four pages long, but I think you find it informative.
All right, so, um, at this point, if we could just do a quick five-minute break so that way we can get back and try to stay on time, um, so we can leave on this beautiful day.
Thank you.
All right, so let's come back together and we've, we have gotten a little bit of a legislative update throughout this whole meeting, um, but this is the formal time for the legislative update. And are you just walking us through, Mr. Secretary of?
I was going to invite our general counsel to participate in that.
Okay, thank you. So do you want to come on up?
Fisher might be here. He, uh, he was actually in the legislature, so we're, uh,
Oh, okay.
We have some, but there isn't much to give, but maybe Emily, if you'd be so inclined.
Yes, so I'm pulling up the update that Ted prepared, and the question mark for me is whether that's been distributed or that will be later.
I don't think so. He just did it this afternoon, about noon.
So since it's Ted's work, I would propose that we have him distribute it after the meeting as a follow-up maybe, and I can take you through just the substantive highlights. How's that sound? So many of the items in the update are not new information. There actually has not been too much policy movement on the main issues since the last time that you met. Um, the, the ethnic and social equity standards bill was signed by the governor. Um, we still are monitoring the lead testing in schools and childcare facilities bills, but there also have not been any major changes in that legislation. It's in the House Human Services Committee. It passed out of the House Education Committee, so we're monitoring.
And what was the vote? That wasn't, the vote was?
In House Ed?
Yes.
I think it was five to six?
Six to five, yeah.
Yeah, six to five. Okay, I thought it was very close, when it got passed out of the House.
Yeah.
Yes, because I think it was that what people were disagreeing on is the number that was included in the bill itself. And what was the number that got passed out? The parts per?
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
Because at one point, there were some people, it was at 13, and then went to zero, and then two, so, um.
Well, there's also, I mean.
It was three in the Senate.
There was a lot of debate about, I just got dragged into this on a, in a different universe, but there was a lot of discussion about whether it would be on the property tax side or whether it's on the general fund side and how much the state was going to participate versus local. And I think it's 50/50 now? Is that what the number landed at?
I'm looking at the secretary for an update on that one.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to sort out. As, I don't know if you heard Emily say the Senate version had three parts of a billion.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's a point of debate, and it's a pretty dynamic situation. I, my perspective is it's all state funding, you know, um, it comes off property, it's still a state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Financing system in education, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're trying to find that balance.
And I don't think the dollar amount, which is 2.4 million, I don't think that's substantially changed over the last month either.
I don't think so either. I think that, that was sort of almost worked out ahead of the policy, so the financial commitment was sort of agreed upon by the leadership and then, um, you know, the mechanics of it. I think it's been a really challenging and complex policy for folks to work through. Um, but, yeah, I think they're trying to find the right balance between, uh, an action level that's politically acceptable, yet what are the cost implications for doing it?
You said earlier that, um, the EPA has its own standard of 15. There's not.
As an action level.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's like, this is where we start, you know? Yeah.
But whether there's any science below that.
Well, there's, the science would indicate there's no healthy level of lead.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So, um, that's been a challenge. That's a hard political argument to.
Right.
I would guess, but, um, I mean, and the larger conversation is about, um, school construction and the condition of our school facilities.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we have other issues in our schools as well. Um, and so there's been interest in having that broader conversation, at the same time, we're trying to resolve this very specific question. So, um, it's been a long process on the lead and water. It's, um, taken a lot of testimony, a lot of technical testimony as well, but.
So the, just in case you wanted to be tracking these, the bill number is S40 for lead. The next important bill number to know is H521. That bill started in the House as, uh, almost total request from the Agency of Education for purely technical amendments, Act 173. So before the delay conversation was on the table, there were five provisions that just weren't drafted exactly right last year in 173 because our understanding of how it worked was new. So they were almost, they were all to do with the finance and administration side of Act 173, and, um, both education committees agreed with the, um, agency's recommendations for those technical amendments. So H521, since it's about Act 173, is the expected vehicle for a delay if one is ultimately passed. So when you're monitoring the Act 173 conversation, look for H521, which is currently in the Senate Education Committee. If the Senate Education Committee does vote to move forward with a delay approach, that will be a substantial difference from the House-passed language, so you could expect to see either a committee of conference or proposals of amendment back and forth. H521 also now incorporates another House bill about special education. That was H140, which was about, um, the membership of the Special Education Advisory Council or the Advisory Council on Special Education, which currently exists in Vermont law, is separate from the Census-Based Funding Advisory Group, which was created by Act 173, but is really confusing when you start talking about all of these things at once. Um, so as the administrative support for the Advisory Council on Special Education, the agency has been really involved in recommending, um, how the membership should deviate from what's the minimums required in federal law, if at all. We kind of took the approach that we should, as a state, just fall back on the federal regulation and not overcomplicate things by layering state requirements on top of federal requirements. Looks like we're not going to totally be successful, but sort of a middle ground might be what ultimately passes. But that language is also in H521, so it will survive as live issues going forward right through the end of the session with the Act 173 conversation. So H521 kind of has become a mega special education bill.
So just to clarify, there was some question about whether they would be reporting to the State Board or to the agency slash secretary? Has that been resolved and where is that?
Still includes reporting to both.
Both, okay.
It seemed to be the position of, um, the advocacy community, so Vermont Legal Aid and Vermont Family Network, that they wanted to keep the State Board as an entity that would hear their updates, reports, advice.
Do you, and these were, had you not received these in the past?
Never.
Oh, okay.
And this is the thing, that's when this came up, it was the, in the six years I'd been the board, we'd never heard from this group and didn't know they existed.
Oh, okay.
And.
So they want to continue that approach.
Right, continue that approach of, of not communicating. Even when we were discussing special ed and the 2200 rule series, we heard nothing from them. Um, so that's why it was, it was interesting when we, I think it was June of last year, there was a new chair and contacted us. And it's like, I didn't, I didn't know you existed.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so I think trying to establish, do we get the minutes from their meeting? How, I mean, we still don't know anything. We don't have relationship. No one's come to see us. No one's sent us any paperwork.
We can certainly, uh, you know, put that on our plate to, you know, because I think they, they serve an important function if we can sort of coordinate those between you and them. It's something we can help with, probably.
Even just getting the minutes from their meeting distributed to us, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Then the last bill that we're actively monitoring is S164. That's sort of this year's miscellaneous education bill. It has a growing number of provisions, as you might expect. So coming out of the Senate, it, uh, the bill included two main provisions. One was a task force on campus sexual harm, so that was sort of, um, sort of a study committee that would look at the state's approach under Title IX. We were not too involved as the agency in monitoring that conversation because we, as we said earlier, we have sort of a light touch, if any, on post-secondary schools, and this is a post-secondary bill. The other major provision of the miscellaneous ed bill as it came out of the Senate was the post-secondary records conversation that we touched on earlier. So the Senate language was better, in our opinion, than the House language. It included more protections for the state in the case of a school that's closing. So we're advocating to keep the full Senate language, and it looks like that's more or less the direction that that's going. So the House Committee has added, or started talking about adding other provisions into this miscellaneous ed bill. So those are, um, a study and/or a pilot of, um, Vermont Technical College Programs at CTE Centers, a school construction working group, uh, and then potentially a change to how the State Board reviews supervisory union compen, or composition. So I think that you'd be most interested in that last one. It's not, the text of that proposal is not in the current draft of the bill, but I've heard it presented.
It's one of the amendments, right? That, I saw it in the testimony.
It's probably going to be one of the amendments. So the State Board has done this several times recently, and I think there's a proposal on the table for next month where a group of districts requests that the State Board give them a waiver to the default supervisory union representation. The way that can be done right now is by a vote of the SU to say, State Board, please review us or grant us a waiver. This proposal would allow a union school district that sits on a supervisory union board to initiate that change through their vote without a majority of the supervisory union board requesting the change. The dynamics that underlie this are really Act 46 dynamics. Many of our SUs will now include fewer overall districts, but the districts represent a large number of towns. Each district on a supervisory union board by default gets three seats on the board if they operate schools. So it's a big shift in supervisory union, um, membership for some of the districts. I think the intent behind this is to preserve sort of the representation for those districts that have now merged.
And I thought there was another piece to this, too, that, um, there was some amendment I saw in the testimony that it would be, that if the State Board decided to change an SU, that we couldn't assign the new SU, that it would go, that the, they would get to choose where they would go?
That idea is in a bill sponsored by Representative Browning and is separate from what I've been discussing.
It is separate from, okay. I thought I saw the same numbers.
The proposal that is described in this list in the update came from the VSB.
Okay.
What position has the secretary taken on this?
I support it.
Support what?
Uh, the part that was being introduced by VSB that allowing not only, previously, as Emily mentioned, the SU board, um, that was one of the, the most common mechanisms. The SU board would have to vote to petition the State Board for a change. Uh, this new language allows any member, uh, district to do that, so I support that. What was happening is the SU board was sort of the supermajority was refusing to, um, you know, give some consideration to the larger districts that are merged, so, um, I support the change.
Okay, does this have the potential of causing inequities if people are splitting out in, by socioeconomics, or have I not got that right?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it's, it still puts it back to the State Board to sort of review, so you still have the opportunity to review it. But, um, as I understand it before, once again, the, the two mechanisms by which an SU's composition could be reviewed is you could do it on your own.
Yeah.
Or the SU board could petition for a review.
Okay.
And this, what this allows is adds basically a third approach, which is, or some member district of the SU can petition the State Board to come take a look.
Okay.
So that just sort of gets around, uh, the issues that were caused by Act 46 where, you know, um, if you, you know, the traditional configuration is three votes if you operate a school and one if you don't. Those merged districts are now, have larger numbers of student population, but they only still had three votes at the SU board, and the other districts weren't necessarily interested in revisiting some composition of the SU board based on the size of the district. So this just provides a means by which they can petition you. You would still have ultimate control over that, ultimate control, but, you know, control over that decision.
I think it gives voice to, um, I think it addresses your concern, equity concern.
Yeah.
On the other way, that it gives voice to all members of the SU to have somebody from the outside to come in, look at the, look at the dynamics and, and how everything is aligned.
Thank you.
I, I was kind of surprised that folks wouldn't just do that on their own accord. I mean, I, I, it's, it's interesting, but, you know, I guess that's the way it works.
That's the list.
Okay. Any questions for?
That, I just want to highlight for you scheduling wise, that proposal by the VSB about SU composition is kind of new. I don't, I think the committee has only taken testimony from the VSB on that, so you'll probably be asked about it next week, if I had to guess.
Yeah, Kim?
The miscellaneous ed bill where the, I know some things were at sunsetting in Act 46. Um, some things would sunset this year in Act 46 because the expectation was there was going to be a cleanup bill. Um, things like the district being able to appoint and, warn their own budgets, appoint their own members, um, in a unified school district as opposed to the select boards. So those things I know are sunsetting, and it seems as though there's not going to be a cleanup. So what will happen?
So I would need to look at last year's legislation to see the exact year of the sunset. There was one. I don't remember. It was this year?
Because I, I remember Dylan, Gian Batista worked on getting it cleaned up for us from our last year's vote anyway. And, and so, um, at the time, I was concerned that it was a one-year sunset and reassured that there would be a cleanup on Act 46. Um, so I just assume maybe they would extend those. I don't know how that works, so I'm just curious.
Has that been discussed in any committees, uh, select board appointments?
And Ted, do you want to just introduce yourself to the record and?
Hi, for the record, Ted Fisher from my agency of education. I'm our Director of Communications and Legislative Affairs. I apologize for my tardiness. I was in, in Senate Education until a few minutes ago. Um, I'm sorry, can you?
So it's not, I don't think it's been discussed at all. So this is the issue of, um, who can appoint a school board member to a vacant position on a unified board, whether it's the select board or the school board? It's been brought before the legislature two years in a row with a one-year sunset, and it's very specific, especially to Representative Gian Batista's community. So I figured maybe it came up in House Ed when I wasn't listening.
This is not something that I have any, that, that I've been present for, you know?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard it at all. I haven't heard it at all.
And I wasn't trying to make it about us. I was just thinking about the number of things that were sunsetting in the expectation of a cleanup in Act 46.
There's going to be a big Chapter 11 rewrite next year. So a lot of energy at the agency, at the Secretary of State's office, at the School Boards Association, and with the education attorneys around the state has been focused right now on getting a package of Chapter 11 amendments ready for next January. But it's a big piece of work, so we're actually hoping to work with legislators even over the summer to familiarize them with all of the, it's complicated stuff, so to get working on that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Good job.
See, it's good to come in right at the end. Everybody gets to do it, and you just wave and say, "Thank you." It's perfect. Yeah. So, so Secretaries Report and SLDS update.
Yeah, so just some background a little bit on this thing called SLDS for new board members. So SLDS is State Longitudinal Data System. This is a federal program. Basically, I would think, schools have two types of data systems I'll call transactional systems and longitudinal systems. Transactional are what we call student information systems, where they take attendance, record discipline, so like, sort of annual data that happens. And then the longitudinal system allows us to do some things over time and also intersect lots of different data types together. So Vermont was one of the last states in the country to receive a federal state longitudinal data system grant. Because we're so small, probably, that wasn't, you know, it wasn't a priority for the feds to do that. It's a project, we've never really had a statewide longitudinal data system. We had one about eight years ago that was created by a consortium of SUs, so the state itself never really had a role in that. And that expired, and this project came online. It's been coming a long time now, it's about six years long. It's been delayed repeatedly over the years. But we're now at the point where we're actually going to use it to turn on something we call the report card or the snapshot, which is our state accountability data portal. So coincidentally, with the SLDS, we've also have new federal policy, Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. You might remember adequate yearly progress under No Child Left Behind Act, where we had a, you know, every bonus can become proficient by 2014, that kind of thing. So under ESSA, we have a different approach to that, a lot of different data pieces. All that gets put together in something called the snapshot or the report card. Coincidentally, we're like one of the last states in the country to also turn on an SLDS, so we're, we decided to use the SLDS to produce the report card, which was probably an error on our part, because the complexity of doing that is pretty challenging. But at any rate, we are on schedule to turn on the report card in May. We, there basically have been a couple phases to this. The first phase, I call vertical reporting, which is actually getting the data from the districts themselves. That was delayed significantly. Just recently, we were able to obtain all the districts from the, all the data from the districts to do this, and now we're in the process of error verification. So we're sending reports back to the districts to say, "Clean up." You know, you get a two-week period to clean this up before we send it over to the vendor to push out the report card. So hopefully, maybe at your next meeting, we'll be able to talk a little bit about the report card. We're close to it, so.
Can you talk about what's populating that? So what data points are going to be?
Yeah, it's an interesting, good question. It's a data collection that we usually do in the spring, but the way we had to organize our data collections, and I should say, by definition, the idea of a data collection should go away over time because we, this should be automated. So we should be able to extract data from a system without even having to send it to us. That would be the theory of action. But it would be all the sort of annual attendance information, if you will. So all that student information, the biographical information, the residency information. There's staff data associated with that, what we call, you know, teacher census information. There's about 22 different data collections in the spring data collection that we've consolidated into a single data collection, and all of that populates up onto the report card. We are going to add additional elements in our plan over time, so in the future, we'll have school climate survey data and some other pieces. But basically, this, what you'll see in the first report card is sort of the basic, underlying, essential biographical information that allows us to disaggregate data based on the equity definitions we heard about earlier today, and then using S-BAC in particular. So we'll be looking at the achievement test scores based on that. And then we have some measures of equity and a few other things that will be able to identify schools that need support in those areas. So it'll be really interesting.
We've got some really great presentations from the AOE about this. Is there any way we could forward that to new members?
Yeah, sure.
Going through, yeah, just because it goes through what the different points are that go into those five categories, the five buckets.
Yeah.
So that, I think, would be really helpful, just so you have that information before you see.
I think it's, you know, fair, at this point, it's been sort of an intellectual exercise, with a lot of work going into it, but now we're actually going to turn it on for the first time. So I think it's really an important thing for the State Board to look at, because as much as we struggle with the definition of what is, you know, what do we want to see kids know and be able to do? This is like how we propose to measure it, which should provoke a conversation about how we define it, you know? So it'll be interesting.
I mean, I'm excited, this is supposed to go out December, and then it's been delayed, so May, it looks good.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, that's great. All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, we had tabled a motion, or tabled, we made a motion to table elections last meeting. So knowing that we would have two new members and wanting to have them at the table. So at this moment, if we'd like to do elections, we'd need to have a motion to untable the motion from last meeting to then talk about elections. So is there a motion to untable the idea of having elections? Moved on table by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Callahan. All right, so at this point, I don't oversee election because I'm a chair, and I'm handing over the.
We've got to vote on that first.
Oh, what?
We have a motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Getting ahead of ourselves. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Disagree, say no. The ayes have it, you have the gavel.
Okay. So we'll proceed into elections of the chairperson of the State Board of Education. All I need is names, I don't need a motion or a second. So if there are anyone who want to place a name into nomination, nominations are now open.
I nominate Krista Healy as chair.
Okay, it's a nomination for Krista. Are there any other nominations for chairperson?
Move to close the nominations.
As a motion, any other nominations? Okay, I'll determine that the elections are now closed. We'll proceed to an election. All those in favor, Krista Healy as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Juggernaut.
All right, and now for vice chair. So are there any nominations for vice chair?
I don't know, John Carroll.
John Carroll. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of John as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and John is now vice chair.
So, thank you, everybody.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. I have to do over here.
Add a commiseration.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Point of personal privilege, ma'am chair. I would just like to acknowledge and thank our colleague from Goshen, Bill Mathis, for his services as vice chair, and equally importantly, for his, just his great services as an inquiring and thoughtful board member.
Oh, thank you. I remember the words of John Nance Skarner.
Which are?
They can't be repeated. He was commenting, he was commenting upon the great power and authority of the Vice President of the United States.
And I'd also like to say, we, I remember two years ago, John O'Keefe and I arrived here, and speaking only for myself, John, knew, knew, knew less than a tenth of what our new members know, and so it's great to have you aboard.
I know, and I mean, really, it's remarks from the audience here, and we're like, you know, Mark brought this wealth of board experience, and I mean, just, it was, it was nice that we have also members on the board and education experience. I mean, it just, I think it makes the board stronger to have those experiences, so thank you for.
Interesting.
And I will add this, that like a phoenix rising from the ashes.
But then translated, I do not like being Vice President.
I know, this is right here.
This is the beginning of the rest of your life.
Right here in this room, so it all comes full circle.
Was it this room? Do you remember, Mark?
The penthouse?
Yeah, I'm sure this is where all the birthing happened, was up here in the penthouse.
That's right.
But anyway, so we're back at, apparently this used to be the public hospital.
That's great. All right, so at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.